Ready? She may be seated. She's the most 30-year-old. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Delray Beach Regular Commission Meeting this July fifteenth. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Commissioner Markert is absent. Vice Mayor Long.
Here.
Commissioner Casal.
Here.
Deputy Vice Mayor Burns.
Here.
Mayor Carney.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If you could all rise, please, for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Or may be seated. Where are my mayor's notes? We have the agenda approval. Any comments on the agenda, anyone? I have one comment, and I'm gonna, I could take it up when we get there, but I'd like to do it now. Item seven H, which is the adoption of the millage rate for the trim notice. This really doesn't need to be in till the twenty-eighth or so of July, and I would like to see if we could have a, I'd like a week, essentially, to put together some savings. I'm gonna be handing out some stuff later, if we don't get it, regarding budget savings. So I think before we set the final thing, I would at least like to have a chance to, address the commission and tell them where I think we can save some money, so that we can then look at the millage, so that when we go forward, we're gonna be starting with a millage that's reflective of some of the cuts that I think we can make.
Mayor, may I? I think, aren't we just putting a cap on it that we won't go above?
That's correct. That's exactly right. But, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Moore. It's indeed true that you can always lower it, but it's funny how that never happens.
Well, we're not lowering it or even placing it. We're just giving a notice to the cap.
Right, which is a maximum amount.
Listen, if you wanna put it off for a week, if the city's amenable, I think we should ask the city. I don't have a problem. I asked, had you provided your list of cuts? The other day, they said you hadn't, so I'm awaiting.
You have them now. You have them now. There was a glitch in the system that I thought I'd sent.
Oh.
And you may have gotten three copies today by the time I figure out how to get them.
Today you sent them? Okay, I have not looked at them.
But I've got them here, I'm gonna hand out to you anyways.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So, as Commissioner Casal stated, she is correct. The purpose of this exercise is to simply set what the maximum millage rate structure would be for the City of Delray Beach, given the July twenty-eighth timeframe, which is wise before you at this particular point in time. During your August twelfth meeting, your next regular meeting will take place August twelfth, we have set aside a workshop meeting availability for purposes of fully engaging the proposed budget process prior to the city commission.
If I may interrupt, I've made a request. I understand your position, but we don't have to have these numbers in till the end of July. Historically, when the city has set the maximum, that's where they stay at. And I think we need to really address what that rate should be prior to us setting it. And I'm asking if we can have a meeting next Tuesday, a special meeting?
I understand that, Mr. Mayor.
Because it's timely. Because the last year, we did it late, and other years, we've done it late. So, I'm not asking to push us beyond the date where you don't have to inform the county as to what the trim notice rate will be. I'm just asking that we have a chance to go through the numbers more thoroughly.
Mr. Mayor, I'm very supportive.
All we were given, let me, let me finish. Back in, we originally were given a very thorough budget, eight hundred pages. In April, it was decided everybody was gonna get summaries. It's very hard to cut from summaries, and I acknowledge that that's what we got. So, you know, and I'm dealing with issues, for example, where we talk about, well, I may as well hand these out now, where we talk about, you know, that the average price per home is four hundred thousand, and I'm just giving you the updated figures for Palm Trail, the beach, Tropic Isle. I did not include the northwest, southwest neighborhoods, because I only got those late and it was already typed. And I will just tell you that, but when you average it.
Do you have an extra copy for the clerk?
Oh, sure, the clerk can have it. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
I know you love to have copies. And, and I just think that we have not, because we were only dealing with summaries, and I'm now forced to go back to the original documents that you have to start digging into what all the numbers are, I would like an opportunity, because staff has done a great job. Everyone did a great job in putting up their numbers, but the job's not over. Now it's our job.
That's correct.
And to just sit there and say, "We are accepting what staff says," I'm sorry, that's not our job. Our job is to also look at the budget and see where cuts can be made. And so, I've given you what the property appraisers, what the values are in the houses, because everyone said it's only sixty-nine dollars. Oh, if that were only so. It's only sixty-nine dollars in a very, very few neighborhoods, because there's some two thousand or twenty-two hundred homes that are being averaged in with that residential neighborhood. Sixty percent or so of them don't even pay any tax, because they're at the maximum homestead, including veterans and senior. So, I just want the opportunity for us to look at where all the numbers are before we just say, "Well, we're gonna look at it later." I don't, I don't think we should look at it later. I think we should look at what we have now. Here's some, here's the, what I sent to you by email, by the way. I don't know if I have one for the clerk. Maybe I do, if Marcus is not here.
He's not, so he can give Marcus.
There we do. So, and I've just outlined some of these things, where we talked about it, and this is, this is just, and this is only phase one, because I'm only up to page, I'm only about a third of the way through the document. And, and I got an email this morning. I don't know how valid it is, but there's a guy who weighs in a lot on budget and says he's found two million dollars. Well, I think we ought to explore what million, what, I know your skepticism, and I'm skeptical too, but I'm not skeptical enough to say it's not worth a review. So, I'm just asking to give me the time to set themselves up so we can have a real conversation about what we can and we can't cut, because as I said, my fellow commissioners were only given summaries.
Well, if I may, Mayor, we got that five-hundred-and-ninety-seven-page document at the outset, and then it was, it was amended and we got it again. I mean, we did get finders this big, and I went through every single page.
I understand the timeline.
But here's the thing, if I may. I, Mr. Moore, we are going to be moving that item that got pulled, the Marine Way.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a date certain on that project? Because there'd have to be a notice, correct?
That's correct. And I was hoping to talk about that once this discussion ensues, and I do have some direction.
Would that be in July, or is that going to be?
It will not be in July.
Okay, so, look.
We have a July deadline. I'm asking the commission to indulge me and indulge the taxpayers, who we all work for, to see whether or not we can find them additional savings. I don't think really and truly that is too much to ask at all. Otherwise, just to accept the city's numbers means we have not done our job. Because none of you, and I don't mean this badly, but I haven't heard any cuts coming out of any of you.
Oh, whoa, 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 wait a second.
No, you talked about the stuff from the review.
We have, we sat up here all last year. You characterized our staff as the fox in the hen house with respect to the budget. You said you were gonna pull all these cuts, and you didn't.
I've made a request.
I love it if you have cuts. I will support you.
I've made a request, and I'm asking if the commission would indulge me on this request, so that we can meet next week, to then, when, when we have, which is still timely, to tell the county what the trim is, to give us a chance to look at the rate that was proposed, and to see whether or not we can, we can find any cuts that would affect that rate to make it lower. And I'm doing that on behalf of the taxpayers, because I think they deserve it.
How do you see this different as us voting the cap? Which we always vote the cap and say, "We are not going over this," and then having a meeting.
Right, and if you go back over to history, we've never changed it once.
I don't disagree that it hasn't been changed, because most times, the people pick the cap that they were going with.
Correct.
Well, Mayor, if you think we all sitting up here don't wanna cut taxes and wouldn't reasonably remove something that is.
I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at, nobody's come up with concrete.
I share your concerns, I'll do it. Listen, I had over seventy-five emails last year on the budget.
Okay, I'm done.
That's not a fair characterization.
Can I get a kiss, Mr. Long?
Mayor?
I was.
Mayor?
I'm sorry.
It's Lynn.
Who's that?
Sorry, it's Lynn.
Oh, that's Lynn.
It's Lynn.
That's Lynn.
Hi. It's Lynn.
Hold on. You know.
I don't hear anything.
I'm a Roman Catholic, so I thought the angel was speaking from heaven here. I apologize. I'm sorry, yes?
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but because of the stage of the proceedings where you're just approving the agenda at this point, and because this item is on the agenda, I would just ask that it remain, and then if there's a motion to postpone the item to a date certain next week, I would ask that you just do it at that point, because it is on the agenda, and just simply removing it, we don't want to create an issue with the agenda. So that's all that I was.
How could we disconnect her?
No, we need a motion to approve the agenda, and then she's saying postpone it.
All right, so, we will entertain, I will entertain a motion to postpone item seven H when we get there. Is that what we're suggesting, city attorney?
Yes.
If we all agree.
Yes, sir.
If you all agree, of course, you know.
I think the, I think it's a robust discussion, so I think you should just have it at the item, as opposed to at this point, removing it. That was just my only suggestion.
That's acceptable.
Thank you.
Then I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any opposed?
No.
Proved.
And Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like for a friendly reminder to residents regarding forty-six Marine Way that was initially being contemplated for this evening's city commission meeting, that is actually being rescheduled to be determined. So we'll engage the necessary advertisement requirements and other processes to facilitate that. And to answer a question that was initiated by Commissioner Casal, that will not take place in July at all. That is sometime in August at the earliest, but we will work to come up with a specific date that makes sense for all once adequate reviews and considerations have been facilitated. But the point is, that will not take place this evening. That will be forthcoming for a date to be determined.
I'm just saying that it's not on our agenda. It's already been removed from our agenda.
That's correct, yes, but for the benefit of the public.
Correct, I understand.
Thank you.
So any of you here for Marine Way, that number was agenda item, whatever it was, stay tuned. So the agenda is approved. We now have the, well, we have the Downtown Development Authority review process and involvement. So that's, that's gonna be, City Manager Moore.
Yes, sir, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Actually, before I address this particular item, I'd like to introduce one other brief update coming from Director of Communications Gina Carter relative to the next phase of programming at the Creative Arts School. I've asked her to offer this update, because we are contemplating an expansion to feature ceramic art programming, because of course, this is an activity that's in high demand, and we are currently evaluating logistics so as to initiate this engagement as part of the syllabus for the Creative Arts School beginning this fall. So Gina Carter, if you would be so kind to briefly update the city commission in terms of what the next steps will be relative to programming at the Creative Arts School, I think that would be helpful, will be brief, followed by the items listed on the agenda. Ms. Carter.
Good evening. I'm Gina Carter, Director of Communications. And as Terrence said, I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about the Creative Arts School and what we've accomplished so far, and what we're looking forward to accomplishing in the near future. So, so far, we've done a lot. We've only been operational since about November of last year. In that short time, we have really, I think, exceeded our expectations for what could take place in that space. Some of the things that there we're really looking forward to is some partnerships that we're developing with different organizations, cultural organizations within the city. One of them that we have planned for this fall is with the Delray Beach Historical Society, and we're gonna be partnering with them on a couple of different lecture series, which is gonna be fantastic for our students, because the way that we're doing the partnership, our students get to participate in those lectures free of cost, just like if they were a member. So that's a really great way of bringing the two organizations together and benefiting everybody that is a member there, and everybody that is a student as well. Another thing that we're working on that we have found to be really successful is part of our wellness initiative for employees. So once a month, we do a lunchtime session. It's about two hours long. Employees can just pop in and out anytime during their lunch and do a craft project with other employees. And we found that employees really like it. They, it helps them get to know other employees in the city that they may not see regularly. It's great for reducing stress, and it's great for creative thinking, and, you know, inspiring them to think outside the box in their own jobs. So over the last nine months, we've also generated some income. Right now, we're just shy of seventy-three thousand dollars, and that's mostly from class registrations. And we've offered, right now, we've offered hundreds of classes, but right now, we have thirty-seven different classes and workshops available to our residents. And we really wanna reach out to a diverse population. So we offer classes that are as little as five dollars, and then all the way up to like two-hundred-and-forty dollars for a multi-week class. So the things that have happened, we've had Hacktivate at the school. That was a five-session event that brought in high school students to work with city staff to talk about and try to resolve real-world issues. We had that at the school, which was, it was great. The kids were really excited, and they loved being at the school. Right now, we're working with Sister Cities to do their summer program. They're two weeks at our school. They're teaching the kids everything from the cultures of the different cities that they work with, even some cooking. Today, they had a Japanese tea ceremony at our school, so that was really interesting. And right now, we're also doing our first annual instructor showcase, which is an exhibition of artwork completely by the artists that teach at our school, which is great, because when people come in, they can see really the quality of instructors that we've attracted, and they're really professional artists with a career, a lifelong career in the arts. So what's next? Well, in the, in the summer, we're planning a creative arts cultural fest. We're gonna be working with just shy of a dozen cultural programs in the city, different agencies, everybody from, from Spady to the Arts Garage, the Arts Warehouse. We're all gonna come together and provide a day of events. We're gonna have musical performances, dance performances. We have a step team coming. We're gonna have live art demonstrations and craft projects for kids and families. So that is happening August ninth, from twelve to four, at the Art School, and that is a free event. And of course, we're all really excited to start the culinary classes, which we plan to start in the fall. So, you know, we're in the stages of planning all of the different logistics of having that happen. That's a very exciting future for us. And then the last thing I wanna talk about is the possibility of having ceramics at our school. Ceramics are really interesting, because they really bring together a community of artists. Anybody who's ever done a ceramics class knows that once you do a ceramics class, you're kind of addicted, and you wanna do a lot more. But ceramics is also challenging, because it requires a lot of equipment and a lot of expertise, and it's very dirty, so you don't really, you know, you can't really do it at home. So where would we be doing this ceramic studio? This, ceramics are currently the most requested class that we get. Our students are really excited about ceramics. And ceramics isn't just one thing. It's hand-building, it's sculpture, it's wheel-throwing, it's slip casting. It's a lot of different techniques and skills that we can teach on this one space. It's highly creative, it's highly tactile, it's very stress-reducing and meditative. And beyond that, it has a lot of return on investment. People who take ceramics classes, like I said, they take more than one, because you really wanna build your skills. So this is repeat customers. These are students that are gonna come back semester after semester. It's also an expensive class, because ceramics is an expensive art. You know, you have to have equipment, you have to have clay, you have to have an expert that knows how to run all the machinery. So all of those things mean that the classes are a little bit more expensive. And at the end of the day, we will make more money off those classes than we would out of, you know, a more, a more simple craft that doesn't require all of this equipment. But the really important return on investment is the sense of community that this kind of class builds. This is really a small, a small class with a small team of people, and it really builds a sense of community. It makes people come back and take classes with their friends over and over again. And it really generates artifacts from the class that lead to other events, like exhibitions and craft fairs, and showing off your work at green markets and things like that. So beyond the financial returns, ceramics really helps build community. So what is our ideal space? Our ideal space is a space that has traditionally been used as an annex to the kitchen. It's right across the utility space from the kitchen. And right now, it is a cinder block, cement floor structure, which is just perfect for ceramics, because that's exactly the kind of environment you want for ceramics. So just to orient us, the space is the little pink asterisk. And the curved wall at the top, which I didn't have the skills to lay out the blueprint with a curve wall, but the curve wall at the top is the northern part of that structure. There are other structures that are adjacent to that space. Those, those additional spaces are not being considered for this. It's really only this traditionally-used-for-kitchen space that we're talking about. Okay, so what does that space look like right now? Right now, it is kind of a hodgepodge space. But I'll, I'll go through there and kinda tell you a little bit about each of those spaces. So the good things about this space, like I mentioned, it's really perfect for ceramics for a lot of different reasons. One, it's already air-conditioned, which is great. It's a comfortable environment to be in for our students. Secondly, it already has double sinks, which is perfect, because ceramics requires a lot of water. Additionally, the space is raw, the walls are cement, cinder block, the floors are cement, which is perfect, like I said. It already has the power capabilities that we would need to run a kiln. That wiring is already there. And the reason it's already there is because of that. Picture number three, you can see kind of a, what looks like a room. That's actually a walk-in refrigerator that was used by the kitchen space. So that refrigerator is still there. So really, there's no substantial upgrades or construction that needs to happen. The space really just needs to get cleaned out, and we can start classes. So here's kind of the other side of the room. I wanna talk a little bit about that metal kind of garage door-looking door that's in the first picture. That is an additional storage space that connects to the stage, the pavilion stage. We are not talking about that space. We're not gonna be affecting that space, or changing that space, or doing anything with that. That will stay just as it is. And picture number eight, you can see double doors with an exit sign. Just to the side of that, there's other doors that lead to a DDA space that is used for storage. It's also air-conditioned. We are not talking about that space. We are not gonna be affecting that space at all. So let's talk a little bit about who's already seen the space, done a walkthrough, and approved it. The fire marshal, the fire marshal, the fire permitting inspector went through, said the space is perfect for this use. It already has ceiling sprinkler systems, so there's really nothing for us to do there. Public Works has gone through, this is predominantly Public Works, Public Works' space. They've gone through, and they like the use of the space that I'm proposing. The city manager is on board, legal is on board, development services is on board. So everybody that really needs to have input, they put their input in, they like the project. So let's look at the space. The curved wall at the top is not curved, but it should be. You can see where that walk-in refrigerator is. That's the structure that I pointed out in the photographs. So ideally, what we would do is create a dividing wall that would provide access from the second set of doors to the DDA's designated storage space and the stage space, and then provide extra space right there along that corridor, so that those other spaces have their own independent entry point and are not affected whatsoever. The other side of that wall would have space for hand-building, for throwing. It would have a designated sink area. The sinks are already installed, so there's no plumbing that we have to do. And then we would have a kiln area near the refrigerator, but off to the side. And then the other space at the top corner is a culinary storage area. That space is closed off from the rest of the space. It has a door, so it's the perfect place to put culinary equipment that doesn't fit in the kitchen, but needs to get accessed on a regular basis. So this is what we could do with the space. We could really energize it with no real major investment or changes, just simply putting out a dividing wall and buying the equipment that we need. So why is it a win? Well, it's gonna increase foot traffic, of course. It's gonna add another dimension to the campus, something that's unique to us, that we can offer. There's not a lot of places to do ceramics in our city, so we would really stand out. It's gonna give residents more reason to come to the campus, to enjoy it, but also to return, because ceramics has more of a return rate than any other class. It gives us an opportunity to partner with other agencies, other art and culture agencies in our city, so that we can do artist lectures. When somebody else has a ceramics or sculptural exhibition, their artist can come to our ceramic studio and give a hands-on presentation and a lecture. That just adds to that collaboration that we can have on the campus. And like I said before, ceramics classes often lead to community exhibitions and markets and art events, and it's really gonna help our students get activated and be a part of the exhibiting artists in our city. So what's the funding? The project does not require any additional funding. I plan to get everything accomplished within my budget, so I'm not asking for another dollar. And the last question is, what about storage? What's gonna happen with the items in that space? The items in the space will be looked at, determined what is valuable and what is not. There's a lot of things in there that are just garbage. There's other things in there that are remnants from other projects, like there's, you know, planks of wood and old water heaters, things like that. If they're garbage, we'll, we'll get rid of them. If they're not garbage, we'll put them in a more appropriate storage space than that. And then, like I said, the DDA's designated space will not be affected. As a matter of fact, we're gonna make sure that we section that area off, so that their space is not impacted at all. That's it. That's my whole presentation. Any questions?
I'm sure there are a few. I think, first of all, I mean, you're doing exactly what we asked you to do to begin with, is maximize the asset we have there to try to generate cash. Do you have an idea on what the revenues? I mean, I know ceramics is real popular. I mean, I'm clumsy, so I don't do it. But, but, but what do you, what would you anticipate? You said everyone likes it. What do, what kind of revenues do you anticipate?
Well, I don't have numbers for exactly what revenues we can expect. I know that the revenue return for ceramics class is higher than any other class we can offer.
Even art?
Absolutely, higher than a watercolor, a painting, a photography. It's gonna give us much more of a return because people can do watercolors at home, right? They can't do this at home. This is gonna be something they have to come and do at the school. So it's gonna give us a lot more of a return and a lot, a lot more of a financial return and also a lot more of returning students. And also, these classes, they cost a little more because we're providing all of the materials, right? So we're providing the clay, we're providing the kiln, we're providing the wheels, all of these things that people don't have to pay for. But they'll pay a little bit more for the class so that they don't have to deal with having to buy any of this equipment.
And so you, when you say these people have signed off on it, so, because kilns, you need to take special things. So they've signed up on having a kiln there and all that? That's great.
Yes, I've reached out to every department that could possibly have any input. And I've gotten their all clear before I brought this to you.
Okay, well, comments to the, you know, Commissioner Cassell.
Well, you've been an amazing return on our investment because you've done a lot and we've been very happy. This is exciting, but it's, it is worth asking. You talked about the DDA's storage space. We do have an ILA. Does this impact that in any way, shape or form as we proceed forward?
No, I made sure to reach out to legal so that they could thoroughly look through that document and make sure that this space was not designated for the DDA. And they've made it very clear to me that it is not. As a matter of fact, the image that I showed with the little asterisk is from, from that. It's, it's from that effort.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Burns.
Yes, thank you for doing your due diligence on this project. It's very exciting and I'm ready to support. It seems like the room was created for this purpose in the first place, minus the refrigerator. So I'm ready to support it. And also, I just wanted to also congratulate you on your accomplishments with the classes. I got the email the other day and I didn't respond to the group text, but the five hundred and twenty-two student enrollment, congratulations, awesome job. And also having Google finally update the platform so that those classes appear open. So congratulations on that and thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Commissioner Long.
Yeah, thanks for doing your due diligence on this. I mean, it seems like pretty much good to go to me. And thanks for making us look good up here. I love taking credit for stuff that like I had no real part in. My mom will be excited. I'll have to tell her when she visits. She's super into pottery and throwing. So anyway, I, I think this is a great idea. I'm excited to see how this transforms that space, so thanks, Gina.
Thank you so much.
I've, I've said what I think. So do we need, this is an action, do we need like direction or what do we need?
I believe so. This is more informational. This is an administrative approval. We're simply advising the commission in terms of the current trajectory of the Creative Art School, what's been accomplished to date. Because about a year ago, July twenty twenty-four, you've all had an opportunity to offer direction and support relative to Creative Art School programming. And Ms. Gina Carter and I haven't visited over the past day or so. We thought it would be a good idea to provide this update, not to mention the aforementioned due diligence.
Thank you. I mean, well, obviously, there's four of us up here that say go, so.
Thank you so much.
Anyway.
Very well.
So we're, that's, thank you very much, Gina. Speaking of ILAs, well, maybe it's the wrong time. I'm just curious, how is the ILA coming between the DDA? We have several. We have one also with it relates, relates to using our internet system. I don't know what it's precisely called, but they're, they're now using our system for the broadcasting.
Streaming.
Yeah, the streaming and there's supposed to, there's some kind of an interlocal agreement, I thought, between that.
We asked them to do that, you know, they weren't doing that. They were on their own, at their own offices, having their meetings. And we, the city commission, asked them at the time because I think the idea was the residents wanted to see what was going on. There was a lot going on. We are, we are interacting together in a partnership. So we asked them to come here. And, and I'm not saying they shouldn't provide some maybe fee for it, but we, we forced them to incur that fee coming here, just so you know, because that's the history.
I, I mean, I, I, I hear you. I, I don't want to get into the argument of whether it should or should not have been done anyway. But it's not a big cost and they are independent, you know, they are a dependent agency, but they're still, you know, independent with their own income source. And I don't think it's a lot of money to start with and.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, in response to that inquiry, it has been determined that it would be about two hundred dollars or so per meeting. So since the last time this discussion came up, that evaluation or calculation was determined. That's been shared with DDA leadership. And they are in the process, as I've been told, of deciding what their presence will be or not be.
Are we sharing that?
They have revenues of a million nine this year, so we're talking twenty-four hundred dollars? And we're worried about whether they can afford it?
It's not about affordability. It's about we asked them to do that as a service to us and our residents.
I think we asked them to do it because they should, my view, they should have been doing it. But that's, we can, that's a conversation for another day. I just asked about the ILA.
That's where I sat, Mr. Mayor.
Fine.
Thank you. May I continue?
You may continue. You're now on A1, correct?
Yes, sir. And ladies and gentlemen, a few weeks ago, I made a commitment in response to some interest having been expressed at the dais regarding the Downtown Development Authority review processes and involvement. And you may recall a memorandum compiled in collaboration between the Office of the City Manager, myself and Director of Development Services, and Thea Jean Yotes, that summarizes why we are, where we are in this regard. I think for good measure, it's probably best that I simply read, take a couple moments to read what I have available for you in terms of background. If I may be permitted, I think I will. In recent years, the passage of several state laws governing timeframes for development, review and quasi judicial hearings necessitated an examination of city processes. New state laws also limit the issuance of quote unquote "new" review comments once the review process has started. Many past protocols are simply no longer feasible. Following the example of the West Palm Beach Downtown Development Authority, whose charter mirrors the city of Derry Beach, the Derry Beach Downtown Development Authority Charter, a formal presentation of each downtown project at a DDA meeting is no longer required prior to consideration by a city board. The DDA still has plenty of opportunities to offer input and recommendations. Written comments can be sent directly to the project planner to include an agenda packages and DDA staff can offer support via comment at the Site Plan Review and Appearance Board, Historic Preservation Board, Planning and Zoning Board, or City Commission meetings. By having the DDA interact in a more nimble fashion directly with the applicants and fold into the these formal process parentheses instead of adding to it, close parentheses comma, applications are anticipated to move up to a month faster through the approval process. Section two point six point four of the city's land development regulations require the city to provide to the DDA, quote, notice of all development applications within its geographical limits, unquote. The community redevelopment agency has the same requirement and receives monthly notice informing the CRA staff of new development applications submitted within the boundary. A copy of the July notice was previously shared with the commission to that effect. Pursuant to Land Development Regulation Article eight point two point two, Section E, subsection three, the Downtown Development Authority can, quote, recommend to the city commission and to downtown business persons and residents the actions deemed most suitable for implementing the downtown development plans, including removal, raising, repair, renovation, reconstruction, remodeling, and improvement of existing structures, addition of new structures and facilities, relocating any of these existing and changes in patterns of and facilities for getting thereto and therefrom. While the Downtown Development Authority has the power to make recommendations on projects implementing downtown plans, the method for providing input over the decades has varied from staff to staff communication to formal scheduling on DDA agendas. With the current regulatory framework, formal monthly review of every development project cannot be accommodated. Larger efforts like developing new downtown plans, parentheses, for example, the parking and curbside management plan, close parentheses comma, or amendments to land development regulations are not subject to the same time constraints. Staff will therefore rely on the DDA for community outreach to downtown businesses and residents and may request inclusion on DDA agendas for discussion and input. So in essence, ladies and gentlemen.
If I may though, Mr. Moore, because I attended the DDA meeting the other day and the distinct takeaway from that meeting was they had no idea about the fact that we reviewed the parking and had that discussion and made those determinations. And look, I don't know what I, I, I want to be careful what I say here tonight, but these are our partners and I feel like they can't possibly feel that way right now. And it's not good for anybody in the city. For some, for the DDA to not feel like we're working with them and for us, you know, I don't know what it takes. I appreciate that if changing this streamlines everything, I'm all for streamlining. Our biggest complaint in the city is that we need to move things along more quickly. But in the process, I don't want to lose sight of the valuable relationships we have. And if we're moving in a certain direction, how, whatever it is, let's just be sharing that. And, and try and, you know, get some input.
Commissioner Sheringis noted will be part of the process. I'm not disputing that, I'm not compromising that. The direction from the Office of the City Manager with respect to all departments involved in collaborating with the Downtown Development Authority does take that in consideration. My interest tonight was to simply advise the commission and the public at large to some degree why we are where we are. And much of it is driven beyond the city of Derry Beach's authority. Because of what's being required at the state level, we need to do whatever we possibly can to identify any and every efficiency possible that does not take away the commitment to engage in partnership accordingly. So prospectively, guidance will be offered to do what we can to, to support that sentiment and achieve the spirit thereof without compromising the ability to, to be as nimble as we possibly can and to have a streamlined process accordingly. So our interest is to in fact collaborate in that regard within the confines of what I just shared.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'd like to, I'd like to speak to this. I think I'm the reason this is on the agenda tonight. I'll be honest, I don't love this. For decades, there's been required stop for certain type of applicants to go through the DDA to then have that recommendation come to us, like our other advisory boards. And listen, no one's a bigger advocate up here than me for streamlining our process. I'm all for that. But the DDA is, we know that applicants, if they don't have to go through an additional board process, are not going to opt to do it. So folks aren't going, if it's an option to go in front of them, they're not gonna do it. And I feel like there's a lot of new applicants coming into our city that may not even know who the DDA is unless they're forced to go in front of them. And I think the DDA is of an excellent advocate for our businesses and our merchants. And I'd like to encourage that relationship. And I would like to encourage folks to go through that process. Again, I understand the efficiency issues, but this isn't like, unless, correct me if I'm wrong, this isn't like the CRA thing where there's specific rules from the state telling us we can't do this. We're just sort of interpreting that we could create some efficiencies if we were to change this process. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It's law. And this is in response to law. And that's how I began the written commentary I just shared earlier. So on that note, we don't have very much ability.
Yeah, I'd like to just maybe some additional clarity on that so I understand it better.
Could an applicant, I mean, I, I read the statute and I think we're bound by, I'm not happy with Tallahassee.
It's constant.
Yeah, these remissions are nuts.
But can, if an applicant feels they will, could do well in front of the DDA? Because for example, they got a relationship, whatever it is, can they opt to have that? I mean, we can't make, I'm just saying, I understand what you're saying.
I guess the question should be by law.
Here's the thing, I actually, when they, when they created these laws that said you have thirty days to give comments, once you, you can't issue new comments, you can't, you know, like it just, they constantly tighten the deadline, right? So I reached out to West Palm because they have a really great DDA. This is my hometown, it's where I live. And the charter is verbatim our charter, except it says mayor because they have strong mayor instead of city commission, right? And I was like, what are you guys doing? How are, how are you, how are you keeping up with all these deadlines? And they were like, we have never taken anything like in this formal process like you did. And then I have some staff that's been here longer than I have. And they said, over ten years ago, it wasn't this, like you go and you present and you put on a PowerPoint. So what we wanted to do is when we get the applications, and there was an example in the backup, of here's your memo, here's who came in, what they're proposing to do, here's their contact information. Here you go, reach out to them and see how they're doing. And help them get through the process that they needed to show up here. So they just need to join our process instead of the other way around. They absolutely can show up and tell us, Brad, this is a great project, we want you to approve it. It's just putting in that once a month stop. And if we go through TAC and we give, like usually they see it after we've gotten the worst of it out of the way, like you can't park this, so we're not even gonna like talk about it or whatever. Now, you know, we can't then add comments. And then, you know, furthermore, it's the training for evaluating the plans of a, you know, five unit townhouse development. Like what is that really gaining at this point for the city to put people through that process? You know, so what we're doing is what we do with Renee Jada Singh is we simply say, this is what came in, here's how you reach out to them. Here people, here's how you reach out to Laura. And then, you know, if anybody has concerns or comments, then they can bring it up. The overarching comment that I continue to hear from the DDA, which they brought up at the last meeting, was asking the link, how long did it take to go through the process? Why are we adding this monthly stop then? So forget what the state says, which I still am just trying to like hurry up and navigate and people have to ask for extensions. You know, there's this underlying accusation that the process is taking too long. So to me, I thought, well, it's a win-win. Here we go, let's go faster. But the reality is, is just Tallahassee, just they shortened something else again in this last session. It's probably, it's related to single family, but it's just this constant tightening of you city have to go faster. And if I show you the deadlines on how long it really takes, it's not always, it's, it's rarely us that's not turning it around within thirty days. I have the, the, the application that was just there in public saying that it took so long. They submitted a request for extensions. I have their request. I'm like, hey, we're not ready, can we slow down? So, you know, everybody wants to go fa, it's always a hurry up and wait, hurry up and wait, hurry up, you know, so. So that, we're all just trying to navigate all this. I think the scary part is the way the state has structured the deadline is, is the if you don't make it, city, it's automatically approved, right? That's where it gets a little scary for us.
That's what I was gonna ask you, that's really what it says.
It does say that.
That is what scares us.
Then it's approved.
And that is the law.
Because then I'm standing here trying to explain to you and Terrence why I accidentally got this building approved, you know.
We clearly need more legislators with city commission experience.
It's a constant gauntlet.
You know.
That's a good one.
That was a self plug.
That was a plug for, for somebody in this room that's running for state legislature.
Who knows who it is, but thank you for the explanation, Thea. And I appreciate that you guys are operating within like these razor thin margins at this point. And it is insane and ridiculous. Listen, I'm not gonna fight this issue, but it is, it does disappoint me that we can't have a required stop through the, the DDA anymore. I think it adds a lot of value. So I hope that this, this workaround where that the DDA is able to still reach out to these applicants through the city. I hope we, we really do our due diligence to effectuate that because I think it's important to partner, especially our new business owners with, with the DDA because I think they're a very effective advocate.
I mean, we just, we didn't even know, somehow we missed another one that the state passed, which is all Platts are administrative now. All Platts are now administrative.
All Platts are now administrative.
So we're like, we missed that one. Like Florida League of Cities wasn't even on that one. And it wasn't until Mr. Cavelli said, well, yeah, but the Senate bill just went through.
He's applauding that, that rule wherever he is, so.
You know, I think sometimes, so we're just constantly like, how do we change the signature pages now? We're trying to, you know, figure these things out. It's, it's a very heavy-handed state government right now. And it just, I don't, I mean, I hope somebody who knows how things work can help.
So nevertheless, our interest, our commitment is to do what we can to strike a balance, maintain involvement with the Downtown Development Authority, do what we can to collaborate, make sure they have opportunities to engage and be a partner with regards to the matter. Nevertheless, given the new state laws of the state of Florida, we don't have much of a choice but to adhere to that accordingly. Otherwise, many issues, challenges, penalties and negative outcomes will be the experience. So please understand that, but it's a continuous process. Nevertheless, that is. Nevertheless, that is our focus. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, if I may, one last item, ladies and gentlemen. Update regarding solicitation for the Crest Theater renovation program. So Director of Public Works, Missy Berletto, if I can ask you to please come forward for a few moments, because of course, this is a meaningful project. Many of you have a strong interest in seeing that the city of Delray Beach does as much as we possibly can. While we are engaged in a potential contractor selection process at this time, we need to be careful in terms of how much we can discuss relative to scope of project details, et cetera. However, we all feel that it's appropriate that the city commission be in alignment in terms of expectations so that we can facilitate a productive process. So Ms. Berletto, if you don't mind, please.
Um, so we we are definitely in the cone of silence in contract negotiations. Um, however, what I would like to share with you, because we've we've brought this subject before commission many times, and we have never gotten a full consensus on how you want us to move forward with the renovations at the Crest Theater. We have gotten everything from let's make it cheap and cheerful to let's make it elegant and and refined. So those are two ends of a spectrum. So what we, how we are planning to structure the upcoming contract that we'll be bringing back to commission is to ask the architectural firm to give us three variations. One will be cheap and cheerful, one will be elegant and refined, and there will be a middle road. But at that time, we'll be able to bring you cost information, exactly what those those directions mean because for us, those are descriptors, they're not details, right? For us, we're looking at exactly how much rigging constitutes cheap and cheerful and how much rigging constitutes elegant and refined. What do you need for a play? What do you need for a little string quartet to come in? And that kind of thing, we're looking for that direction from the architectural firm, and they will give us those three choices. Once they have arrived at those three choices and they have the kind of information that you as a commission need to make an informed decision, then we will bring those back to you and you will choose which of those designs we move forward with with um with actually designing and implementing. The number that we put into the CIP for next year is the highest number we expect that to be. So the actual, depending on your choice, may come in significantly lower.
So notwithstanding our debt, we put in um that money for the theater at the highest level. Deficit of six million in the CIP.
Certainly we did.
Thank you.
Because we don't have the, we don't have the full direction from the commission yet.
Got it, no, no, I just make it sure.
We don't know what the numbers are yet, so it's, I think the way you're presenting it is gives us all a chance to.
Right, it's the highest number and then you can go down.
Yep.
It's like the cap.
So.
That's budgeting.
Yes.
It's project budgeting.
Project funding, exactly.
Specifically project budgeting.
I have every confidence you're going to find that six million anyway, so Commissioner Gasol's concerns will not be will be addressed.
We're going to have a lemonade stand at 434 South Swinton.
I'm going to be buying a ton of lemonade.
Please stop by.
Gina can do that.
Freshly squeezed?
She's got it.
Absolutely, no other way.
That's all the difference.
So with that, ladies and gentlemen, that's where we are. So we'll take your feedback today as an informal consensus as to bring back the respective options and we go from there. So thank you. I owe that this time, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Okay, this is the time for comments from the public. Any members of the public wishing to address the commission on any item, except if it's going to be a public item later on, uh, you you may now come up to the lectern, give your name and address for the record, and you will each have three minutes.
Hello, Siobhan Barrowian, 339 East Atlantic Avenue, Delray Beach, 33483. Um, hi, taxpayer here. There's been a lot of conversation about taxpayers today. Um, I grew up in Delray Beach and I'm here on behalf of Morley, Periwinkle and Coco and Co. We have three stores on Atlantic Avenue, um, and we have paid our taxes to the city for over 17 years. Um, I have to say, I'm very disappointed in the commission. Um, the last time I stood up here, I asked all of you to include the downtown Delray merchants in conversation and decisions about parking and got a lot of nods and agreement. So I was very upset to hear that you all moved forward with a parking plan last meeting and didn't even tell us as downtown business leaders. I know you all have the contact information for the DDA, who wrote up a plan based on feedback from a lot of merchant meetings on the matter. Um, that plan was not utilized. I know you also have the contact information for the Merchant Association. Julie Gasol is the only person who has come to those meetings. Um, you all also have my personal contact information because I have emailed you all and called you all on the matter multiple times. Um, neglecting to rely on your downtown businesses for their valuable data is just that negligent. Um, and in fact, that's really the only data that you have because the data collectors that were installed last year didn't collect any data. They didn't work. Um, I also hear that the city moved forward with this plan to meter the railroad lot because um you all were too tired to really talk it out. That is disrespectful to the people that you represent and very upsetting to me as a business leader and as a resident of Delray Beach. How dare you rush through a decision that is going to change and affect the blueprint of our downtown Delray Beach? Using the city of Coral Gables as a comparative model for parking is like comparing apples to oranges. Coral Gables is a completely different city and we all know that. Our stores are lucky to have thousands of customers who have been loyal to us for all 17 years that we've been a business. Some of those customers spend hundreds of thousands of dollars at our stores every year. Do you know where else they spend their money? All of the other businesses downtown. Do you know what big spenders love? Feeling like they're getting a great deal. Do you know what feels like a great deal? Complimentary, long-term parking. Downtown visitors don't come to the avenue in two-hour-long spurts. They come, make a whole afternoon out of it, they enjoy eating, they enjoy shopping, they enjoy strolling the avenue. Forced turnover and high rates is going to drive away the people who make this the most fun small town in America, which I am proud to be a part of. So I am very disappointed in how this has progressed and I don't plan on letting this go. I implore all of you to reconsider and utilize your business leaders as a resource and as a partner as you make decisions that deeply change and affect our downtown landscape. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Amanda here on behalf of 339 East Atlantic. I am the store director for Periwinkle, Morley and Coco Co. Coco and Co., and I'm also a resident of Delray Beach. I'm super disappointed in how the commission has handled the parking downtown and implore the commission to reconsider their plan to meter the railroad lot. I speak for myself as well as our customers when I say this change will deeply affect downtown and we do not plan on letting this go.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Rachel Citron, 339 East Atlantic Avenue, 33483. I'm a resident of Delray Beach. I'm also the store manager at Periwinkle right on Atlantic Avenue. I'm going to keep this super concise so my point is not lost, but I'm super disappointed as well in how the commission has handled the parking downtown. The recent decision feels disconnected from the reality of our community and said taxpayers are supposed to be advocates for. The lack of plan for an employee parking is honestly despicable. This places an unfair burden on all of the employees and penalizes them who now just have to pay just to show up to work. So I really urge the commission to reconsider their plan to meter the railroad lot.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Angelina. Um, I'm also going to keep this short and sweet and just speak from personal experience. I'm the general manager of the stores, 323 and 339 East Atlantic Avenue, 33483. And every single day, I deal with not only disgruntled customers, but just people coming in off the street and they're always confused about the parking app and how it works. And nine times out of 10, they just end up parking in the lot in the back. In addition to that, a lot of our clients who spend hundreds of thousands of dollars will not come to the stores unless I can guarantee that there's a spot for them in the railroad lot. Um, right now, I strongly urge the commission to reconsider metering this lot because I know firsthand that they will do, the taxpayers, they will do everything they can to avoid parking in that lot if this change goes into into effect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Melissa Morales, Milkman. I live at 19 Northeast Street. Um, I did have numerous letters from other moms, but I don't believe I'll have time to read them tonight with their concern to public safety. I was here last week to discuss the four, almost five stolen cars out of our driveway. Last car was stolen on June 29th. I just want to thank the Delray Beach Police Department for how they've handled the situation. They have truly went out of their way with the little resources they currently have. I know there was supposed to be a big meeting coming up for the city to discuss the police department's potential pay and pension reform or not. I truly hope the city realizes that the resident's safety needs to be the number one priority. And in order for that to happen, the Delray Beach Police need to be fully supported with competitive salaries. We moved to Lake Ida during COVID, decided to start our family here. We knocked down and rebuilt our home to stay here because we love Delray. Until the four auto thefts happened, my husband and I were completely unaware of how understaffed the Delray Police Department is, as were all of our friends who have young families living here. The city needs to make a big change. Delray has come a long way from where it used to be in terms of safety. Let's not go backwards. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria, sorry, Ferrera Cesar. I'm a resident of Delray, I live at 11 Northeast 7th Street. I also stand here as a parent, a neighbor and a very concerned community member, hoping to give voice to a lot of our known community members, business owners, citizens and our police force who deserve the right pay for the for the work that they do. Tonight, I urge you guys to keep our words in mind as you finalize a fair and competitive contract with for the Delray Beach Police Department because our our citizen's safety, our city's stability and our officers' futures depend on it. I'll state a few things that I've learned over the past couple months because I was not aware of the situation that we are in. Um, there's a significant pay gap driving experienced officers away. Our police force is tragically underpaid with other agencies in neighboring, in neighboring um areas of the county paying anywhere from 20 to 50% higher rates or salaries than what the Delray Beach Police Officers are getting, um, at least as a starting salary. Since October, our law enforcement has been working without a contract. And on top of being underpaid, there is uncertainty in short and long-term career prospects that are driving our officers away. This talent loss is very real and very expensive. With at least 25 vacancies, with more likely to come, we are chronically understaffed and understaffed. And it's not just a loss of bodies, it's a drain of hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars in training costs and voids and voids in community policing, specialty units and response times. Our public, public safety cannot be compromised. Um, as you've heard tonight, there, the car thefts are dramatically common in our town and police officers are left with little time and resources to support their community. Short staffing is a huge risk to response delays and during major incidents. And as fam, as someone with a young, with young kids and a family, I can't be questioning whether the police are going to be able to respond to major incidents for myself or for my community. Delray Beach residents, especially those of us with young families who are looking to establish a safe home in the area, are anxiously watching these negotiations. We value our officers' dedication and want them to thrive here. We want them to be part of our community, to own homes, to have careers and futures here, and we can't stand by while they are lured away with better pay. So please, more than ever now it matters for you to finalize a fair contract to stop the exodus and keep our trained, experienced officers in Delray, strengthen public safety, respect the taxpayers and what the priorities of a safe community are, and demonstrate the values of our town to note, show that we truly support our men and women on the front lines. Thank you.
Hello, hi, I'm Samantha Mohammed. Um, thank you for having me here. I am the Director of Business Management for Periwinkle, Morley and Coco and Co., which is on the avenue at 339 East Atlantic and 323 East Atlantic Avenue. Um, this is in regards to the parking issue. It's clear that the merchants of downtown Delray were not considered. We, um, Periwinkle at least has been a small longstanding business in Delray for over 17 years. Perhaps larger companies that have come on more recently can afford the cost of paying for employee parking, um, and the the loss of revenue that that will affect in terms of our operating expenses, along with loss of sales year over year so far. But it it's 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 not sustainable for us, um, you know, in covering our own operating expenses. Uh, it just feels like, um, if this has already been passed or approved, it's like we're being driven out. But we do attract a lot of customers that come to the avenue and they clearly don't want to pay for parking or additional fees and they they clearly, time and time again, tell our store associates this. Um, we, you know, and we as a business pay our business tax just like everyone else. In terms of budgeting, clearly Delray has grown in population and visitors or tourist attraction over the years. We benefit from that as well. The city should have long time accommodated for this growth, um, in in their budget and not try to scour, scan additional revenue with this current plan. The fact that the DDA has been in touch with merchants and the commission has not listened is very harmful to the city and to us businesses down in Delray Beach. Our store, our in-store sales by customers account for 90% of our income. That's for our three stores there on the avenue. Online, although it's growing, it only accounts for 10%. We need to keep our brick and mortars open in order to sustain our businesses. And we do know that the people of Delray Beach, along with many others from across the country, come to our stores purposely to shop. And this is affecting us in a big way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Megan. I'm the e-commerce manager at Periwinkle, Morley and Coco and Co. and a resident of Delray Beach. I'm deeply disappointed in how the commission has managed downtown parking. The decision to meter the railroad lot would negatively affect both residents and visitors. I strongly urge you to reconsider this plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Lisa Pastridge. I live at 7613 Char and Cross Lane and I work downtown at Coco and Co. I'll keep this very short and to the point. Retail has changed immensely the past few years. We've had to pivot, find new ways to get new customers, and our repeat customer is constantly back in the shop. Adding an additional hurdle like paid parking doesn't make the customers want to come to the avenue to shop. They'll just order online. There needs to be something to incentivize for our consistent local customers to continue to have them come back and shop.
Thank you very much.
I'm George Law, 46 North Swinton, and I'm not disappointed. You guys actually make, just, just, yeah, I think you need a compliment at this point.
We appreciate it, Mr. Law.
I'm an observer. Uh, I've watched these, all these meetings all the time. I'm sitting over thinking, taking notes for no particular reason, but you guys come up with some very good decisions, outstanding decisions. I won't tell all of them. And not only do you make good decisions, you go, there's always somebody that speaks up and says, eh, that's a bad idea on the dais. And I think, oh my God, I have to roll my eyes again. But the good idea is that you look at all the alternatives, all the possible things that, you know, could be wrong with your, you know, making a decision, look at it all, which is good. As for the parking in Delray, I've been attending these meetings regularly for almost 10 years now. I was, I've been here most of my life, but usually I've worked, you know, somewhere off and just came down on weekends. A hundred times I've heard discussions about parking, how much it costs, should we charge, should not charge, should we have it for two hours, four hours and whatnot. And we're still talking about it. What's wrong here? People are not paying attention maybe, coming to the meetings or looking at the discussions about the parking. The same thing about your your new programs where you've, you know, divided up the different sections and things of the town and for for the parking. Excellent, we're all going, all going over in great detail, every possible alternative explored. Anyway, that's part of my semi-annual evaluation. I'll finish it next time.
I would say you're doing it more quarterly than semi-annual. I just thought I'd throw that out there, so. We always appreciate your input, Mr. Law.
Well, by the way, I might do a favor.
My number's online.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Mavis Benson, 800 Greenswood Court. I'm here today to express I'm here today to express my deep disappointment in the process by which a new downtown parking proposal was introduced and adopted. Last week, the commission approved a significant change with no opportunity for discussion, collaboration, or input from the very community it most, it most definitely affects. At yesterday's Downtown Development Authority meeting, when the board chair suggested holding a public workshop to give voice to local stakeholders, the mayor responded. It is passed. It was adopted. You can have all the discussions you want. The plan was adopted. This is very deeply troubling. The tone and posture felt dismissive and the implication that community dialogue is now irrelevant contradicts the spirit of public services and collaborative governance we count on from our elected officials. Equally concerning is the mayor's repeated comparison of Delray to other cities. These comparisons show a fundamental misunderstanding of what makes Delray truly special. Other cities strive to model themselves after Delray, not the other way around. Our community's success is rooted in its unique blend of charm, accessibility, local ownership, and civic engagement. To ignore that identity while imposing sweeping changes without local input is both short-sighted and damaging. I'd like to reframe how we evaluate the decisions that we make, particularly those that directly affect our downtown businesses, employees, and the experiences of visitors and residents. Too often, when we implement a new policy, whether it's about parking, pricing, or programming, the question becomes, did it hurt anything? Did it kill business? But I believe that's too low a bar. The more useful and forward-thinking question is, is it actively helping us? When prices go up, our programs shift. We can't rely solely on the absence of visibility, visible damage, or complaints. We need to ask, are our employees finding it easier or harder to get to work and stay for a full shift? Are our customers lingering, spending more time and money, or are they leaving sooner? Are we seeing growth in business health and not just endurance? No harm does not mean positive impact. And I think we all want more than just status quo. We want vibrancy. We want prosperity. We want a downtown where businesses, businesses don't just adapt, they succeed. So I respectfully ask, as we consider, I just ask that you give this consideration and let's not build a system that pushes away the very people who contribute to our city's character, cultural, and our economy. Thank you.
Ms. Benson, I, I, we don't normally comment from here for other comments, so I will be ma- I will be responding to you in Commissioner comments, so if you want to stick around, I got a lot to say.
I'm sure you do, Mayor.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Alan Costello, Big Al's Steaks on Atlantic Avenue and Chair of the Downtown Development Authority. I love the city of Delray Beach. I moved here almost thirty years ago and I've operated my restaurant in downtown Atlantic Avenue for almost twenty years. I've listened to the Kim Lee Horn reports from two thousand and ten and two thousand and sixteen, and I participated in the curbside study. I fought so hard for good parking management, so many times right from this podium and from within the DDA, and I'm here to tell you today that the city of Delray has never been so close to a satisfactory working parking system as it is today. Yes, some of our lots allow long-term parking where employees are accommodated with no fee. And yes, there's times where employees can park, uh, with no fee at the parking garages around the city. And yes, the city makes millions from the meters, millions that it didn't make when the meters weren't installed. And also, yes, the meters on Atlantic Avenue work to create good turnover, giving our businesses great benefit. Last Tuesday, Missy seemed somewhat perplexed when she thought parking concentration was around eighty-five percent, but instead found that it was only fifty-five percent. That's because it's working. And that's because what Kim Lee Horn found is that except at the height of our season, we don't reach full capacity with our parking. Atlantic Avenue has less than a hundred spots total. It feels as if there's a parking problem when indeed there's just a parking management issue. And while we yelled and begged for parking management, we've actually achieved it without even realizing it. And to get directly to the point, to destroy the functioning parking system by just turning it into a revenue generating machine, one which maximizes the money squeezed out of the asset, will definitely bring additional funds into the city coffers. But it will destroy the delicate mechanism by which parking currently operates successfully. And it will dramatically affect the businesses and employees that support and create the wonderful downtown economy in our delicate ecosystem. Please don't throw away the baby with the bathwater and destroy the parking management that works. With just a few fine tweaks, could be made even more perfect. With some no-fee parking included for employees and employers. But when it comes to parking, revenue is not the only consideration. The parking management is the very means by which the economy survives. Getting the patrons here and allowing our city to be utilized by our locals should be the main goal of the parking management system. Honorable Commissioners, I ask that you consider workshopping and hearing from your constituents. I ask that you work and hear from your valued partners, like the Downtown Development Authority, whose job it is to help you with these decisions. And I ask that you reevaluate the decision you made last Tuesday in undue haste. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Hello, good evening. My name is Suzanne Donahue. I'm a native Floridian and a resident of Delray Beach since two thousand and three. Um, wanted to introduce myself because I have applied for a couple positions, um, within the city boards, so I just wanted to say hello. And then number two, wanted to urge the commission to consider putting maybe some speed calming devices in, like speed humps. Um, I live on Thirteenth Street and, um, I'm where the detour is right now for the north end of, of the roadwork. And I got to tell you, it's taking your life in your hands coming out of my driveway. I'm right near where they turn on that street and people just fly down those streets. Just this week, I've had six other neighbors, because they know I'm vocal sometimes, that came to me and said, we've got to do something because it's just out of control. We get a lot of people coming through there often, but now it's even worse because that's where the detour is and it's going to continue to our other neighbors as it moves further south. So just wanted to see if there's any consideration in the future for adding some sort of traffic calming to slow down the speeders and make them more aware of, of the residents.
Are you between Thirteenth and Second? Where, where on Thirteenth are you?
I, I'm on, on northeast Thirteenth, One House Inn.
East of Swinton.
East of Swinton, One House Inn. So they're cutting through.
West of, oh, well, that Thirteenth is a very, yeah, I, thank you for, thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, may I give you this? Good afternoon, everyone. Nice to see you. Adam Frankel, one-fifty Northeast Sixth Avenue.
First of all, I want to welcome, I want to welcome former, uh, Commissioner Adam Frankel to the room.
Thank you.
Why you'd want to come back is, is beyond me, but I'm happy to see you here, but I just want to recognize you because I try to recognize when we have former commissioners in the room and
I appreciate the courtesy.
You're in the room.
Well, the reason I'm here is I'm a nineteen-year DDA resident taxpayer. And I've heard a lot of discussion regarding the DDA. I don't think I've heard any residents speak up. A lot of the businesses do. But I received an email that the mayor would be attending the meeting yesterday, so I tuned in, and I did on YouTube, and I found it very interesting. I heard many times that we care about our constituents. In nineteen years, I've received zero emails from the DDA, zero communications from the DDA, zero from the DDA. I asked my neighbors today prior to coming here, what have you heard from the DDA? The majority answered, we don't know what they are. I understand that there is a budget request coming and they're seeking a little over two million dollars. I went on their website, which I also wanted to point to the mayor, it was interesting that you said there's no backup. There is no backup, but I did go to the West Palm Beach DDA. They have full backup, a huge thing.
Also in Fort Lauderdale and every other DDA I looked at, but to be fair, the decision was made that they would now be putting the backup.
And, and I wanted to thank you for that.
Chairman immediately jumped on it and said, you know, we're going to do backup and that's great.
I think it was a great move. Um, I went back five years. Their budget was about one million, so they want to double their budget in five years. I would like to see a detailed line item budget of what they're seeking. I know the CRA provides it. I know the city provides it. I know the departments provide it. I think it would be very helpful for the taxpayers to have that information. I also heard a lot of, uh, uh, talk tonight about the railroad parking lot. I know many of you are aware that two years ago, we directed the city to put meters in that lot. It's been a two-years process. I haven't heard any complaints about the two reserved spots for the pinball museum for their golf carts there, that they have reserved parking. If there's an application as a DDA taxpayer, I'd like to know how I can get a reserved spot. I, I think it's important to act in partnership, as, as Ms. Cassell said, the CRA is a perfect example of how they act as partners with the city. However, it's my time as a city commissioner, I never found that to be the case in many instances. I believe I can point to treatment of city staff and the disrespect that I saw on several occasions. I see how code enforcement is trying to enforce certain ordinances downtown, yet they're still clothing outside in A-frame signs. I'm not sure how that's going about. But I also wanted to speak to special events, and that's what I wanted to, I share with you today. I have two seconds. If you look at this, it talks about how we limited special events. I, I'd ask that you ask, look at that policy because I find it to be very informative and I think we don't really follow that.
Thank you very much.
Sure. And may I correct your name tag?
What's, what's it say? Adam Frankel?
I fix it all the time.
Montre, I've been at three-two-hundred-three Northwest Second Avenue.
What keep us alive? What keep us alive? Ain't nobody telling me. If your heart start beating, look out. Get down. And them and those beyond them, they have to keep pumping water, move water. If you have a good program going, once you get it started, there's new blood coming out to keep pumping in. And the new blood coming from your community. And if you can come together with one another, you could always solve the problems.
Simple. If we come together, if we come together, shut up, shut up. Facebook, oh, my bad. Okay. Yeah, it's simple. Mrs. Zat said it. We got plenty of programs in this community. And if we don't work together, guess what? It's going to falter and it's going to die. So we got to keep pumping new blood and stuff so we can keep things rolling, going and growing. If we don't come together fully as a city, if we don't start this bickering and fighting as a city, if we don't stand up as one against what's going on in this world, in this country, we going to falter. Simple. We got to work together, not for self. We got to work together for all of Delray. Look, my neighborhood, the set, we been here. The Bahamians, they did their work and they got pushed back into this area. And all we want to do is continue to build. We want to build for our children, for their children, and their children. We ain't going nowhere. I ain't going nowhere. And I'm the new blood that Mrs. Zat was talking about. So whenever you hear my voice, it's new blood pumping into this city because we got work to do. Yes, downtown is built, but now this downtown got to be built, not for what's there, but for the people that's here. Entertainment District need to be extended so that black business can thrive, can grow. It's always complaints about what we doing, but it's nothing being done to help us grow and stay and be sustained in this place. Now, we can protest if we want to. We can stop putting money where it's supposed to go and bring all this stuff down if we want to. Y'all don't want that. So do right by the people and not for your own pockets, not for real estate companies, and, and not for the land, when the land, and stop bidding up on all the land. FAU finna take the away land from the owls. FAU mascot is an owl. And they finna take the land from the owls and they ain't going to have nowhere to go. So imagine the people being suffocated because of all these buildings and we ain't getting the natural air that we need to live and survive off of. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Montre. Who's next?
Hi, Joy Howell, twenty-five Northwest Twenty-Fourth Court. I just wanted to come and say thank you to you, okay? Because we finally got Village by the Seaside. And I think you all are really, you really deserve a lot of credit for that and a shout out especially Missy Barletto and our city manager, Terrance Moore. It's, you know, it's interesting. People say, oh, that's such a small thing, but it isn't. It's part of our vision here. And the way that vision gets translated is in so many ways, both public and private, we don't even think about. And for example, I'll give you two examples. I drove by Sunday Village today. That is a charming development. I can't say I was in favor of it originally, but it's really turning out beautifully. And the historic homes that got preserved there, that wouldn't have happened if we didn't have a Village by the Sea vision. The beautiful green streetlights that you're putting on Swinton right now, that's a Village by the Sea architectural feature. That's not something that you'd find in, you know, downtown West Palm. So I just want to say thank you very much for that vision. Thank you for the things you're doing to implement it and to show leadership for both public and private implementation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Laura Simon with the Downtown Development Authority. Thank you for, um, your service. Good evening. And I want to thank our constituents, um, both residents and, uh, business stakeholders to be here tonight to speak out on behalf of the downtown, um, those that are in downtown and those that, um, enjoy our downtown. Um, I also have several things I want to talk about first, um, but I, uh, concur with the resident who's speaking about the Swinton project at Twenty-second Street, Northwest, Northeast Twenty-second Street and North Swinton Avenue. That has been a huge, um, I run that strip every day and have watched waste management trucks drive through that, uh, area. The road closure has been a debacle from the very beginning. I'm watching people drive through and almost run over people, strollers, dogs, um, me. And it is very concerning and it is not, it's got, it's a long way to go. So, um, school's almost in, in session, so I've just put that out there. That is, again, northeast, northwest, Twenty-second Street and Swin- North Swinton Avenue. Um, uh, also, I've heard a lot of things around partnership, collaboration, communication. We, as you know, as a Downtown Development Authority, have an interlocal agreement with the city as, um, managing Old School Square to help in twenty-twenty-two to bring it back as in activate and program that space. Um, in the spirit of collaboration and communication, we were unaware that the main uh, storage area facility that is part of the pavilion stage, that is the only storage facility for the entire campus. Yes, there's a freezer in there. It was a walk-in cooler that was used to store all of the liquor, beer, all of that that was used for the entire campus, not just the Crest Theater was part of that one space. But it also was the home of the chain-linked fence, the thousand, uh, folding chairs that were used for the amphitheater, chairs and tables that were used for the vintage gym. That space is integral part of the whole campus. And I would just encourage you all before you move forward with a, sounds lovely for a beautiful pottery studio, but really look hard at what you're going to cut off for the rest of the campus that won't go back. You'll never get that storage space back. And it does back up to the, the amphitheater stage where if it's national acts will perform, there's no green room, there's nothing there. Just I strongly encourage you to look at that very, very seriously before, we were not aware of this at all. And I really, I mean, as far as the spirit of partnership and collaboration and communication, I would really encourage that to continue um, and be better. We are better. We're a better partners. Um, and same with the parking. You know, we are a partner and this whole, and, and I, it's very concerning that a lot of this was happening without any, um, communication with our organization, so. Um, and I appreciate a lot of the input and partnership and, um, direction. However, I think there's, uh, we can always, as, um, Montre says, we can always be better. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, Representative for the Legal Department as well. Uh, I'm Paul Cannon, ten-twenty-one East Heritage Club. A couple of things I wanted to speak about, primarily as Chair of the Police Advisory Board. One of my roles is to advocate for the police department. One of my roles is to advocate for the police department. We've had a number of speakers this evening talk about issues that there have been. This week marks a turning point, I believe, in the future of our police department. We have the executive meeting where the Special Magistrate will present his report, give both the union and the city leadership the opportunity to either accept his findings or not. I believe that if the decision is made not to accept his findings, regardless of how you feel about what those findings represent, in terms of the salary package, the pension, et cetera, I think that would be very detrimental to the future of our police department. It sends completely the wrong message to them. The morale is rock bottom right now. Do you really want that to get any worse? We have the opportunity to turn that around, restore the morale, restore the prestige that our residents have in our police department. I implore you to accept the Special Magistrate's finding, and let's move forward. I'd like to just add as well as a shout-out to our fire department. The Station 113 on Linton will have its official opening Friday week. For those people who didn't get the notification, at 10:00 a.m., please come. Please watch the fire station be commissioned, watch the push-in of the fire appliance. I think it'll be a really exciting event. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, public comment is closed. We now have the consent agenda, which I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We now go to the regular agenda item, Agenda Item 7A, which will be presented by Anthea Giannotis. If the city attorney would mind reading the resolution into the record.
Yes. Resolution number 13025, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, authorizing a modification of standards for approval to Section 7.9.5A of the Land Development Regulations to allow a dock to extend beyond seven feet from the face of the seawall into the intracoastal waterway for the property located at 1020 Seaside Drive, as more particularly described herein, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you very much. Now, this, both Items 7A and 7B are quasi-judicial hearings, so anybody here wishing to speak on Item 7A or 7B, if you could please stand and be sworn by the clerk.
By the authority of the state's authorities. As I wonder if the standard folder, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth? Nothing but the truth.
I do, yes.
Thank you very much. Is there any ex parte communications from anybody on this? We're gonna do 7A first, but the quasi rules I just read, and the swearing-in is for both 7A and 7B, but now specifically in 7A, any ex parte communications?
Just what would be on the server, I believe.
Same here.
Yeah, I mean, whatever's on the server.
Same.
Same, okay.
Mr. Mayor? The rules, quasi-judicial rules, to read those.
Oh, yes, thank you for reminding me. Let me read the quasi-judicial rules for you. This hearing, this hearing, which is 7A and 7B, shall be conducted in accordance with the quasi-judicial rules. The applicant and the city shall be allowed 15 minutes each to present their case. The public shall be allowed to speak for three minutes each, or a maximum of six minutes, if a person represents an organization or a group of people who are present but agree not to speak. The city commission, staff, and the applicant may be allowed to cross-examine a witness. The city or the applicant will be allowed to offer rebuttal testimony. The decision to approve or deny an application or appeal may not be legally made upon personal views as to whether a project is a good project or not, nor may a decision be based on the number of citizens who support or oppose a particular project. The law requires that all decisions must be made on the basis of whether the project meets the requirements of law, the comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. Thank you for reminding me. Ms. Giannotis, would you please read the file into the record?
Yes, I'd like to enter File 2025-183 into the record, and then I don't remember if we read the reso.
No, she read the whole reso.
I blacked out, clearly.
I don't blame you, sis. So did I, which is why I forgot to read that part. I'm sorry. To the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lauren Schrammick. I am the project manager on the construction happening at 1020 Seaside Drive, and I am authorized to be here on behalf of the homeowner at 1020 Seaside Drive. We are seeking relief to Section 7.9.5, which states the standards for approval with the building department on docks. We have a revision in with the building department for this dock that is currently on hold due to the current limitation for approval, which states that the dock may not extend more than seven feet from the face of the seawall into the waterway. We are requesting relief to this section, and we are able to do this through Section 7.9.4, which allows us to request relief to the standards of approval. These documents are also included in the agenda provided to you all. This is her site plan. You can see that she sits on a double lot, which is beneficial in that the dock is less encroaching to the surrounding neighbors. I've included her survey here. This is also included in your documents. And down to business, the dock plan. Shown here is a snapshot from the plans that we have in the building department for approval. The dock is required to meet a 10-foot setback from the property line of the neighbor, and that 10-foot setback is noted there on the left, and as you can see, we are more than 10 feet. The length that we are asking for approval on is 33 and a half feet. It is shown there dimensioned, and the width also dimensioned on there is 10 feet. And in case you're wondering, the piling material we are going to be using will be timber piles, and the finished dock will be EPE. This is an aerial view of where the lot is located. There is a purple arrow down there towards the bottom showing where 1020 Seaside Drive is located, and you can see that it is tucked away, I guess you could say, in a cove, out of way of the usual boat-traffic lanes. If we go in a little closer, these are the neighbors to 1020 Seaside Drive to the north. One neighbor having a dock 35 feet in length, the next neighbor to the north 40, and the next neighbor to the north of that, 45 feet. Other neighbors who have also sought the same relief that we are asking for today. We have the Florida Department of Environmental Protection approval. Our permit number is listed here for you, as well as the entire permit package that we have. The DEP approved this layout shown here, so they were able to see and approve in their documents the exact dimensions of the dock that I gave earlier. The reason we are seeking this relief to Section 7.9.5 is the depth at the face of the seawall is quite shallow. It limits the docking ability for medium-to-large vessels. Our homeowner does enjoy offshore fishing, as do many of us, I'm sure, and safe dockage of a vessel would be more appropriate on a dock that extends out from the seawall like this one. Additional considerations, if you may, we do have joint state and federal approvals shown in our DEP-approved documents. That does include the Army Corps of Engineers. As I mentioned before, the residence is on a double lot, so the neighbors to the north and south have a bit more room than maybe some other lots would have. And we are not installing a boat lift. It is not part of our scope of construction. Thank you very much for your consideration. If you have any questions?
Thank you very much. To the city.
Okay, I think you have a pretty good overview of the request. There's one sort of correction that I wanted to just put on the record. So I'll show you really quickly. If it ever comes. There we go. Okay, so this is the property. The zoning on this property is R1 AAA, and I'll explain why I'm bringing that up in just a minute. This is... There we go, working. Here we go. Okay, so again, the building official weighs in apparently on docks, and since this is the relief that's being sought is not related to public safety issues, you can see the channel remains actually kind of completely free of the dock coming into the navigation. That's why it shifts over to the commission to review. It's considered a dock because it's wider than five feet. We are kind of working on some of this, based on the approvals you've done, and you'll see an ordinance taking the results of this one into consideration as well. So the docks are sort of in the code, are expected to come along parallel to the seawall. That's the expectation of a dock. But as the applicant has provided, the depth of the mean water height, and like how far out you have to go to safely moore a boat, this is the request before you, is that it's a dock that's 10 feet wide, that extends out 33 and a half feet. It's fairly consistent with the docks that the neighbors have. There is one correction that is not, I think, really affecting the position of the dock, but the minimum setback in R1 AAA is actually 12 feet, not 10 feet. So before we issue the permit, we're gonna ask for that correction on the drawing, just to make sure the record's clear. It doesn't adjust the position of the dock, because they are more than 20 feet, I think, set in. So they've got ample room. It's 10 feet, or the setback, whichever is greater, not whichever is less. So that's the one thing. Again, the seawall is also in play here. There's a clear width of well over 500 feet. That is not always the condition when docks are being proposed, so there's plenty of room to allow for safe navigation and not to endanger the public and have reasonable access. Again, they've gone over the DEP approval. And again, I don't wanna... So your findings that you're making, if you decide to approve or deny the application, is that the standards in the LDR, having that eight, you know, having it parallel to the seawall, are just really not feasible in this particular instance, and that's the evidence that has been submitted about the depth of the waterway, and that the change that you are proving is not going to provide a danger to public welfare. And those are the standards for the docks currently in the code. I'm here if you have any questions.
Finished? I thought we were kind of waiting for another one. Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to address this matter, please come to the lectern. You will each have, give your name and address for the record. You'll each have three minutes. I thought there was one more slide by what I was seeing. Sorry. Huh? Well, that's the one I was waiting on, so, you know, you didn't do it, so I was...
I keep you on your toes, aren't I?
I mean, I read, I read the report, you know, I, nothing better to do than read these things. Are there any members of the public wishing to address the commission on this matter? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Is there any cross-examination between the city or rebuttal from the applicant that relates to what's been presented? Fine, to the commission. Commissioner Cassell.
I'll support this. I mean, reading it in the agenda didn't sound like I wanted to support it necessarily, but seeing it, and how the, it's the fact that the dock is not gonna be sideways but out, and also the fact that all of the neighbors received the same approval makes, it makes sense, and so, yes, I'll be supporting.
Great. Commissioner Burns.
Yes, I'll support it as well. It seems, I heard that it has plenty of room for safe navigation, and that it doesn't present a danger, so I'll be in support of it as well.
Commissioner Long.
Seems reasonable to me. I'll support. Thank you.
The reason I was waiting for that slide is because I wanted to point out how that section of the intercoastal is recessed in. And, you know, I feel differently when it's not recessed in it, but that goes all the way back, you know, some feet, so it's really not intrusive into the intercoastal waterway. And so therefore, I mean, I think that it works for me, so I'm prepared to support it.
Motion to approve Resolution number 130-25.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no, excuse me, we're gonna call, roll call judicial. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Cassell.
Yes.
Deputy Vice Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Kearney.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Item number 7B. The clerk, again, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. If there's anybody here to speak on this item who has not been sworn in? Seeing no one, fine. If the clerk, if the attorney could please read in the resolution.
Yes, this is Resolution number 134-25, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, approving a major subdivision application for a final plat with waivers for a subdivision known as Southwest Fourth and Seventh Homes, to replat a portion of Lot 1 within Block 20 of the subdivision of Township 46, Range 43 East, as recorded in Plat Book 1, Page 4 of the official records of Palm Beach County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Okay, I've already read the judicial, quasi-judicial rules. Are there any ex parte communications on this, on this item? Commissioner Cassell.
I don't know if we spoke at some point in the past about this, but I'm thinking, possibly, I'm not sure.
Maybe.
Yeah, sorry.
Commissioner Burns.
I'm thinking that we talked about this as well.
This might have come up at a prior CRA board meeting.
I was gonna say, we saw this at the CRA, so that's not really, that's what I meant, not mean by quasi, I mean, ex parte, but yes.
Yeah, I guess if it was at a CRA meeting, then that.
Yes. Yes.
We have seen it before.
Yes.
So thank you very much. If the, if the city would please read in the files to the record.
Yes, I'd like to enter File 2024-168 into the record, and have a presentation of the request.
Christine Tibbs, Assistant Director for the Delray Beach CRA. Good evening. This is the major plat application for 704 Southwest Fourth Street. So you'll see here that the Delray Beach CRA purchased this property in December 29, 2020, with the intent of future development of affordable workforce, single-family homes. So it is zoned R1A right now, and is currently a vacant lot at the intersection of Southwest Fourth Street and Southwest Seventh Avenue. The property is unique, as you can see, as that it does go across Southwest Seventh Avenue, with one lot on the east side of Southwest Seventh Avenue. So with this application, we are proposing to plat two lots to the west of Southwest Fourth Avenue and one lot east of Southwest Fourth Avenue. We are also putting in right-of-way dedications and easements that are included on the plat itself, four corner clips, a 10-foot general utility easement, and a 12-foot water and sewer easement to accommodate future development. And you'll see here is the plat itself. So with this request, we hope that the board will find positive findings as it relates to land use, as we are not changing the land use or the zoning. We are keeping it R1A, single-family. As to concurrency, the residential development will be served through connections in existing water and sewer mains. Drainage will be managed on-site per city requirements. A traffic statement wasn't required at this time. The Solid Waste Authority has indicated that its facilities have sufficient capacity to accommodate all development proposals until 2054. We will submit a school capacity availability determination at the time of development as required, and then any park and fact fees will be paid at the time of building permit. A finding of overall consistency, we believe, can be made, as with in Article 3.2 of the LDRs. The development is residentially zoned. It will be developed in a manner that's similar to the developments currently surrounding it. We are developing, we are adding to the housing types within the neighborhood, developing workforce housing, so adding to the variety there, and we are going to build just one unit on each of the proposed lots, so three total. As to consistency with the comprehensive plan, the property, always Delray comprehensive plan, the property is surrounded by current, single-family homes, and we are going to build single-family homes, and adding three more to the neighborhood. We, however, we are requesting waivers for all three lots, and the waivers are before you right now. We are requesting relief from LDR Section 4.3.4K, specifically the minimum lot size requirement of 7,500 square feet for lots 1, 2, and 3. We are proposing lot dimensions and lot sizes and the three lots as the best use of the existing property. As you'll see, Lot 3, it is what it is, on the east side of Southwest Seventh Avenue. And then lots 1 and 2, we try to split them equally, so you'll see the lot sizes and the lot dimensions for those up on the slide. The minimum lot width and lot frontage requires 80 feet for lots 2 and 3, so we are requesting waivers from that requirement for lots 2 and 3. And then, so, at this time, although the legal lots of record, and I'll just, we'll go back here, although the legal lots of record are not the 50 feet wide for the standard lots, the code does allow for the development of workforce housing on sites with a 40-feet width, which we would be doing with those three lots. And granting these waivers, we do not believe would adversely affect the neighboring area as we would be building single-family homes that are like the surrounding properties. Wouldn't significantly diminish the provision of public facilities, as stated earlier, wouldn't create an unsafe situation. We would be developing a long vacant lot and adding more stability to the neighborhood. Doesn't create a grant of special privilege, as we believe we would be given the same development opportunities as others would be granted as well in a similar situation. So, in conclusion, we hope that the commission approves this plat, our 704 Southwest Fourth Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christine. To the city.
Okay. So, the, after we had our first discussion about all plats being administrative, I had to tell her that she had waivers and said that didn't count for this one. So, she's like, I'm going to go? I'm like, no. So, okay. I don't have a lot to add. I think you've gotten a really good overview. It is an odd piece of land that is, has not been subdivided before. And it's like, like many pieces of land in the northwest-southwest, it has never been formally plotted. And so, this is a great service that even just plating it makes it far easier to redevelop with the CRA. So, there are a few things. There's a water and sewer easement on the plat, a 12-foot wide water and sewer easement. There have been, even with these tiny parcels, the need for providing some right-of-way tracks and corner clips and things, which just eat the small one on, you know, the west side a little bit more. It is R1A. Again, you had a very good overview of what the zoning wants, the lot size and the width to be. And in order to approve these, that are, the corner ones being not 80 feet wide and the three lots having less than 7,500 square feet, you have to make waiver findings that this is not going to diminish public facilities, create an unsafe situation, or be a special privilege. When you look at these older neighborhoods, the parcel sizes that are throughout the eastern communities of the city are rarely 70 feet wide, right? So, the pattern of lots of different sizes throughout the surrounding area is fairly consistent. The ones that are blue do not meet the minimum area that's required under today's code. And the ones that are less than 60 feet wide, as required for the interior lots, are shown in orange, and the ones that don't meet the current corner requirements are shown in blue. So, I think it's fair to say that the zoning that we have is, that we apply throughout the city to the east is just not the way the city was plotted, and it's something that staff has been ongoing studying to see what we might need to change in the future. Nonetheless, the only other thing that I wanted to, to talk about is this one. If the proposed lots were already legal lots of record, LDR Section 4.1.4 would allow for their development anyway. So, if you make the decision to grant these waivers, quite honestly, you are providing the same rights to that property that the surrounding parcels frequently enjoy. And while I understand that we have used the legal lot of record measurement as a way to use what was considered remnant lots, in a way, requiring that legal lot of record, in my opinion, is somewhat unfair to the historically African-American neighborhood and the other parts of the city that didn't have the benefit and didn't go through the benefit and the expense of plating in the 20s, right? So, again, this is a request for waivers. It doesn't result in a pattern that's drastically different. The CRA is intending to use particularly the lot that's only 46 feet wide for affordable housing. And so, it was reviewed with the waivers by Planning and Zoning Board on May 19, and it was a recommendation of four to zero for the preliminary and the final plat. And this whole process will be streamlined moving forward shortly, so I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll get back to you. This is a public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this application, please come to the lectern, give your name and address for the record, and you will each have three minutes. We got one. There we go. We have two.
Mayor, can you, they were sworn in.
My name is Cheryl Castle.
Excuse me, you were sworn in. Were you sworn in? Did you, oh, no. I'm sorry. I thought I saw you, I know she was sworn in.
I wasn't sworn in.
Oh, well, then why don't you, you need to be sworn by the clerk in order to testify. I asked that kind of before.
By the authority vested in me, as a governor of the state of Florida, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is to prove the whole truth and not to prove the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Please, your name and address, etc.
My name is Cheryl Castle. I live, my home address is 635 Southwest Fifth Avenue, but my mother's address is 720 on Southwest Fourth Street, where she's not able to come here. So, I was concerned about her property being, I think it's Lot 1, next to Lot 1. And there's an easement there, and they put the fence up, jam up tight to her fence. When she brought that property, it said she had to give up the right-of-way for six feet on the other side of her property for the easement there. Excuse me, but when they put that fence up, they put it up and left about a foot there. And there's a lot of vegetation that's growing in between that foot right there, and we can't get in there, cut in there anymore. And the easement, the easement is there for the convenience of FPNL and the phone company to get down in there, which they never cleaned it out. And it always, I always thought it was an alleyway there.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know. But when I talked to Nolan, no, not Nolan, I'm sorry, I don't remember, Roland, Roland, he said he didn't realize that it was an easement there or an alleyway there. So, I said, we need to get this straight before they go building up there to make sure it's legal.
Okay. Thank you. We'll address it with staff before we make our decision. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Betty Ann Haygood. I live at 409 Southwest Eighth Avenue. And my reason for coming here before the commission is because I received this notice in my mail, and I wanted to know how this is going to affect the property that I am now owning.
All right. You are on where?
409 Southwest Eighth Avenue.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Ms. Tibbs can speak to this if you want.
I'm sorry. What, I would ask, let me ask the representative of the CRA to have a go at this.
409 Southwest Eighth Avenue?
Yes.
So, Anthea can chime in too, but it shouldn't affect your property. We are required to send notices to residents within a certain area surrounding our property, so that is why you got that notice.
Okay.
Yeah. But it shouldn't directly affect your property.
Yeah, because you're, you're a good block away, I think, right?
Yes.
Well, my thing is, how can it, are they asking me to give up some property? Because in the back of me, there is a, where the, the city used to drain off water, you know, hurricanes and stuff. And on the other side of me are two houses, so what are they asking of me?
We're not asking for anything. We are just notifying you that we are plating three lots, planning to plat three lots at this address, and we were required to notice residents with a cer, within a certain radius surrounding our property.
Okay.
So, we are not making a request to you as neighbors or residents.
But thank you for your comment.
I thought she was concerned because her property.
Sorry, could you speak into the microphone?
And re-identify yourself.
Okay. My name is Cheryl Castle. My mother's address is 720 Southwest Fourth Street. Her property joint the back of my mother's property, right there on the easement on the back. And we all was told when we bought the property and the houses that we had to give up six feet of our property for the easement through there. So, that means she can't get behind her property where her fence is to cut all the vegetation that's growing up behind her property either.
Thank you very much. We will, we're going to address it with staff just right now.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Are there any, excuse me, are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Ms. Genoche, would you like to address what's at public comment?
Okay, I'm going to do the best I can, but I'm also going to rely on Ms. Tibbs to augment what I say. So, what's happening right now is the only property that is being affected by the action the commission is going to take is the ones that are outlined in red. The, this lot, this lot, this block doesn't have an alley, but there is a utility easement that runs through, through it. I'm not sure that it's consistent all the way through it, so...
Sorry, I don't mean to jump in. It's not consistent. That's why we had to add it to ours, because ours wasn't platted. And so, we had to make those dedications as part of the plat to make sure that we also had that dedication on our properties.
So, nothing is being, nothing new, let's put it that way, is being taken from any of these other properties or being affected, taken is a strong word for easement. But this property that Ms. Tibbs is asking to plat on behalf of the CRA is going to have the same utility easement because there are utilities in the area. I think it's sort of a separate conversation as to whether or not there's a way to look at the maintenance and things like that, and we can look into that separately?
Yes. We can look at the fence that's there. We did inherit that fence. It came with the property when we purchased it in 2020. We haven't really made modifications in anticipation of going through, well, figuring out what we wanted to do with the property, plating it and putting it out. So, we can look at the fence situation if it is affecting nearby property owners and the maintenance of that easement to make sure that that issue is resolved separately.
A lot of times in that area, the fences are offset from the property line by a foot or so, which sounds what it is here, so they can't get at it. So, maybe you'll consider when you do this, when you build your new houses there, that you would do the fence along the property line, which will free up and make accessible the portion of it that you can't get now.
Yes. I'm sure we will take that into consideration to make sure that any of the easement area and the nearby property owners would be able to access all parts of their property and maintain it.
That's, that's all we can ask.
Out of motion?
Do you have, are there any, to the commission, any question?
Sorry. I know that we, you already kind of did it, but since it was a little murky, can you just ask if they have cross-examination or rebuttal, even though?
Any cross-examination or rebuttal between you or any of the witnesses or anything? No? Nope? Hearing none? That's closed. So, to the commission.
Motion to approve resolution number 134-25.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Casal.
Yes.
Deputy Vice Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Mayor Kearney.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Yes, you may say your idea. Yeah, I just wanted to say to Mrs. Castle and Mrs. Haygood, is that right? Just that, you know, the commission, we will be looking into and staff will be looking at your concerns, so problem solved. All right, thank you.
Just delay, I'm going to take her contact information.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Christine. Okay. Next item is item 7C. Now...
Could I ask a question? In light of the fact that Commissioner Marker couldn't be here for circumstances beyond his control, could we move this? Because...
Yeah, I was actually, I think that's probably a good idea because we may be choosing the same people, because I mean, we, you know, a lot, we all kind of know the same group.
Could we have a discussion really briefly, Mayor? Excuse me, I tapped you with my foot. I was asking the city manager, because when we're looking to a point, how are the, our city partners, our nonprofit partners, Spady Historical Society, are they getting a seat at the table for this? What about our CRA? Is the CRA getting a seat at the table? What about the DDA? We, before we can appoint people, I kind of have to have an idea if this, if the example, Historical Society is going to have a seat at the table, then I won't put Winnie on. But if this Historical Society isn't, I might want to put Winnie on. And not knowing, it's hard to make determinations, Mr. Moore said we needed to have that discussion.
I understand that this, at this juncture, this, the, this committee is really just helping to establish the questions and things such as that. At the time when we have the big room with everybody, it would be my expectation...
That they would participate.
That everyone will, all the different, you want to make sure that all...
I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Neighborhood participation, we want to have the not-for-profit participating, we want to have the chamber involved, we want to have, you know, lots of different people...
I'm not exactly 100% clear how it's working, so before I pick, but thank you for that clarification, so yeah, if we can move this to next meeting.
Well, that's fine. I mean, is there, do we have consensus to move this to the August?
August 12.
August 12 meeting?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. It won't really affect our timeline at all.
No.
So, that'll be fine. So, we're going to be, 7C is going to be now deferred until the 12th of August.
Do we need to vote on that?
Do we need a motion to, do we have a motion to move it?
So, move motion to defer to our August 12 meeting. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. 7D, this is the nomination to the Historic Preservation Board. This is, this is by Julie Casal.
Yes, I'd like to pick Mr. Richard Casser.
This is...
Second.
Yes, his name is...
Oh, yeah, Richard Casser, oh, yeah, okay, that's fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right. The second is the appointment to the Art Advisory Board. We have Vice Mayor Long and Commissioner Casal. So, Vice Mayor Long, why don't you go first?
Yeah, I'll reappoint Bob Costello.
All in favor, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, fine.
Okay, I may need to defer because I was, oh, no, you know what? I'm going to put Mr. Spear, Sam Spear.
Oh, Sam will love you.
Second.
I like Sam.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's fine. All right, nomination is now for the Delray Beach Housing Authority, and this is also Commissioner Casal.
Yes, it's my day. Christina Stamper?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They're fine. Okay, considerations regarding the amendments to the education element of the comprehensive plan. I brought this up with, with City Manager Moore the other day because I'm not, I mean, I know you all keep saying we keep coming back and it keeps coming back, and it does keep coming back.
It's not where you want to be.
But only because we're not doing it the way I thought we should have done it to begin with. The comprehensive plan, there's a whole process to amend, this is amending the comp plan.
It's a big deal.
It's a big deal.
Understood.
And I think we should, I hate to use that word workshop again, but I think we need to, before we start addressing it here, what we want to do, I think we should be deciding at a kind of a workshop what we want to do with, in a free kind of ranging dialogue as to what we want to see it to be. And then, when we come up with our recommendations, then put it on, then put it on the agenda pursuant to how you do a comp plan change and do it that way.
I agree.
That's my only suggestion.
Got my vote.
Listen, I'm, I, I think it's a very important subject matter, so I'm totally willing to dedicate the time. But before we do it, I think you need to get together with Mr. Moore and tell him how you want that, and he needs to meet with us individually.
Well, that's fine. I'm happy to do that. I've got, I've actually got it all, I've actually got it all written down.
Or send it to us, because I, no, not, not, no, no, I don't like a data dump at the last minute. No. Thank you, and I well appreciate that.
I know they like to use that W word in front of some of the members of the commission.
What, just, could you put it, give us whatever information beyond what you've already provided in the last meeting? In addition, so I understand what you're trying to, what we're trying to accomplish.
Right, because we really need to do that, and then we start the process. Because right now, you know, at a meeting here to discuss, I, I don't think we're gonna get there, so I, I just.
So, ladies and gentlemen, if I may chime in.
And I'm delighted to send all my notes to have you, you know, look at them.
I want to know what you are, I, I'm trying to accomplish. I, we've, I've read the comp plan, um, as, as it relates to the education, I, we've sat and we met.
Right.
And we discussed, um, variations, changes, we gave, all gave our input, so I'm struggling to, I understand what you, what you need out of this to get to where you need to go.
I am happy to provide all that information. Because I was gonna do it tonight, it would just take long, and then we'd end up in the same place saying, it's a comp plan change, we have to do
Just get it to me before the meeting.
There's notice requirements, there's a bunch of other stuff that you require.
So that I, don't bring it to me on the night of.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I may, please, I'd like to offer a suggestion.
Thank you.
As to when this will take place, when this could transpire. I would like to propose that we accomplish this Tuesday, August twelfth, three o'clock in the afternoon. Workshop meeting, we devote a couple hours for this particular purpose, and for the record, I must clarify the reason we are here at this time, July fifteenth, because a commitment was made during the June seventeenth workshop engagement on a subject to bring this back as a regular meeting item. And, and I, my individual conversation with you, Mr. Mayor, I made the suggestion, well, this would be an opportunity for the commission to offer direction to that effect. So, given the fact that we do have space available for August twelfth at three o'clock, I would like to propose that we make arrangements to that effect.
Is that our next meeting?
That is our next meeting.
Yeah, because, I mean, when you start getting into August, changing your comp plan on education, you're not gonna have any effect on the next.
Well, when we make a decision, there's still, the, the meeting will be, the comp plan change will be in September because.
That's my point, where really, we've, we're losing a year of effect on education, in a sense.
I, I.
I mean, we could still act on our intentions, but we won't have them.
I actually thought, well.
Two weeks is not gonna make a difference, so.
I agree.
Okay.
So, consensus for August twelfth, three o'clock workshop meeting?
Have my consensus, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, very well. August twelfth workshop it is, and we go from there, so thank you.
They don't have these things at the, this legislature, you won't have all this fun, I'm telling you. Oh, yeah.
You're, you're not gonna have the snacks either.
Yeah, there'll be no snacks. No, they probably get real refrigerators, they probably get real snacks.
Sorry.
All right, the next item is seven H. All right, this is what I brought up before.
We know, yeah.
Um, I, there's a lot to discuss here, and, I mean, I don't want to go back through it all, but if we're gonna have a long hearing on it now, I can do that, uh, because I've got lots to talk about. I've given you both worksheets that I've, that, you know, outlining the stuff. I mean, I would prefer to do it in a special meeting, um, where everybody's kind of alerted to what we're, we're, we're gonna be doing, give everyone time to study and to relook at what they might have, come back with some ideas. Um, because I, as I said, I think the taxpayers deserve, um, you know, after, as I said, after staff has done his job, I think we need to do ours, uh, and look for these cuts, uh, to the extent we can save any money.
But again, it's a cap, and I know what you're saying, and I argued that same thing three years ago up here, but in the reality of it, if you, if, if your cuts, and some of them I looked at, I'm not sure about, others maybe, were still the twenty-six million in the hole.
You, you, well, actually, we're twenty-six, to be fair, we're twenty-six million against a wish list, you never really need to care.
No, it's not a wish list, this is where you keep on saying things.
Okay.
Mr. Moore took the original wish list of all of our departments and he cut it.
Yep, I know.
And then he presented it to us, and then he cut it another twenty-six million. Ninety percent of our expenses are contractually obligated to us.
I agree.
I would love to get to where.
I'm asking for a week.
It's not that, let's just do the cap at the six point one, and then you, I am promising you on my word, if you have good cuts, I will cut them.
I'm just telling the message that we're sending to the taxpayers when you do, when you adopt the cap for the trim notice.
The city staff has, they have things they have to do in order to get us to the next place.
I'm just asking that we don't adopt the, we have, we don't have to do it tonight, we have lots of different stuff, because if we're gonna get into adopting it tonight, we're gonna have a whole meeting on it now, and I'm happy to do that.
We're adopting the cap.
No, because I, I'm gonna fight, I'm gonna tell you why you shouldn't adopt the cap tonight, that you should have, spend a week trying to figure out and review all the cuts so that you said some you agree with, some you don't.
You're saying after the cuts, though, we can't reduce down? We can.
Because we never change, I mean, I.
We can, though, right? You agree with that?
Best intention.
I agree that we can, but I also am in agreeance with giving more time. If we need more time and you're asking for a special meeting this month, then I'm for that.
Imagine a special meeting next week.
And then it gives, um, Commissioner Markit an opportunity to weigh in on this, so I'm, for a week.
That's another reason, I didn't think of it, good reason. So anyway, can we get a consensus to move it to next week?
Can we ask the staff, how does this impact our city and the staff? Is there, I'm just curious, so I know what I make, what the decision being made, how, what the effect of that is, I would just like to know.
So, the city commission, of course, has the ability to offer direction along the lines of a special meeting, so we have until really circa July twenty-eighth to advise the Palm Beach County Office of the Property Appraiser as to what the military rate will be, so time is of the essence, and frankly, we are in this place at this time because of direction and guidance haven't been offered last week. So, I proceeded accordingly, and this was a great opportunity to get to that place. I wish to clarify once again, the obligation of the Office of the City Manager working collaboratively with all departments is to strike a balance to bring back a balanced budget consideration
Right.
Based on all scenarios, so I'm beyond reviewing any considerations to define an event as a shortfall, I mean, one can call it a, a gap technically, however.
I call it a gap, it's a twenty-six million dollar gap.
Well, no, yes ma'am, and that was the initial observation, and.
Well, we haven't agreed on filling it, I haven't agreed to leave all those vacancies.
If I may, Commissioner, to continue. So the opportunity does exist for the city commission to address budget considerations as we get to that place, thus the different military scenarios we've offered during the July eighth meeting. We offered four different scenarios, and the balance was struck to come back with a consideration. So, we have solid recommendations in terms of a balanced outcome, I'd just like to offer that, and of course, the commission will have to rule and offer their authorization.
Your balanced outcome isn't, okay, in one of those scenarios, your balanced outcome overlooked nonprofits, it overlooked
No, no, that's not true.
In the five point, it did. Then you go to the second one, then the third one, then the fourth.
And we've included it.
And you keep saying balanced, but we're still diving into the reserves and taking out a minimum of six point nine million.
We're having, but we're not having that much discussion.
It's not really balanced.
We're asking to move the meeting.
If I may, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, I'll agree to the special meeting, just, let's.
So, I'd like to make a proposal if there's an interest for a special call meeting, that should take place next Tuesday, July twenty-second, how about four o'clock PM?
Four works for me.
If that's available for everybody else.
Commissioner Long? I know you, I can, I love your face.
I usually leave Tuesdays.
Now that I've had time to progress through my various stages of grief that I have to come in here next week, um, four o'clock, um, yeah, why not? You know, I got nothing else to do.
I don't either, so there you go.
Listen, I'll be honest, like, I don't know why we can't just adopt the cap and still have
Thank you, I agree.
The exact same conversation next week.
Right.
But, again, I don't want to be, you know, if, whatever, we'll do it next week, I guess.
Mr. Markers, Mr. Markers not here. I mean, there's a lot, I, I mean.
Fine, I don't care, whatever.
And I want you guys to have the chance to read what I wrote on different kinds of things, and there's a lot of other views out there, and I just think that we owe the taxpayers every opportunity for us to set a trim notice millage that they're gonna look at, which.
Okay, it's fine, I'm, I'm on board, you don't have to.
And for the record, I would ask the commission to be decisive in terms of July twenty-second relative to a military adoption.
Oh, no, we, 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 that's a drop dead date.
That is, so that would be my commitment, no we cannot.
Yes.
So, in response to Commissioner Casal's question, and just to follow up, what impacts would that might have, I respond to that effect as well. So, we need to achieve that, so this is not a workshop meeting, this will have to be a special meeting for the sole purposes of addressing this.
Yes.
Number one. Number two, as we engage budget considerations, our next step will be the two public hearings in the month of September. Wednesday, September third, your first hearing, your final meeting, hearing will take place Monday, September fifteenth for final adoption. So, I would love for myself, working closely with you, ladies and gentlemen, Department of Finance and others, to finalize specific budget considerations in conjunction with what we've already made available, so that we can get to that place and achieve that outcome.
If you could provide us a document, I'm gonna make a request.
Go for it.
I would like a document that reflects the requests from the departments, the full request, okay, from the departments, the modifications that you made, and then where we are, what, what that difference is, because calling all of these wish lists is, wish lists, excuse me, when actually we're gonna keep ourselves at the minimum level of service, it's not, it's not proper.
Well, we'll have that.
You've modified those numbers twice.
It's my recommendation to bring back balanced considerations, that's the reasoning for it.
I understand, but that, I, I appreciate that you did that, you were directed to do that.
I was.
I know, but, but, but the idea that people believe that we're pulling Nespresso machines off individual desks, or like foot warmers for their feet.
No.
Wish lists sounds like things that are not necessary, that's what I'm saying.
And for the record, I've never used the term wish list. My interest is a balanced budget recommendation.
I think the city should put one back here, quite candidly, if we could.
They just got a Keurig.
Ladies and gentlemen.
I think we should take that Keurig away, I think that was a wish list item, and it should be gone.
Understood. So, Commissioner Casal, ladies and gentlemen, if I may, I will work closely with the Department of Finance.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
I will work to have something assembled to you by the close of business into the week.
Because there were.
So you can have it over the weekend.
There are wish list requests that are really amazing, as you said, Missy, with the CIP.
Okay, you got it.
Then there's the requests.
We got it.
Then there's your cut down.
Third time, got it, got it.
Now, I want to make sure he's clear on what I'm asking for, thank you.
I'm always clear.
I would ask that you reach out to each of the commissioners to talk to them about what they would like to see as well, so, because Markers not here, he may want to see some additional information, so, so that everyone is fully prepared for the, that's all I'm asking, okay? Perfect.
I'll prepare a report and go from there.
Can I get a motion postponing the item and setting the special hearing with the date and time?
Okay, yes.
So moved, thank you for that.
The date and time being Tuesday, July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five at four o'clock PM, same location.
First is, uh, but thinking of a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
That was a hesitant eye there.
So many proponents and like, remove things, this meeting is dragging on, we're just.
I know, we've taken five things off.
It's like a glacial pace.
I just think that the taxpayers deserve to make sure that we took a second look.
Yes.
And we're doing it, let's just move her along here.
You acted like we weren't doing that anyway.
Public hearing, this is the second reading on the resolution, uh, one one six dash two five, authorizing the purchase of certain parcel of real property located at six seventeen Northwest Second Street from the Delray Beach Community Redevelopment Agency. This is not a quasi judicial, this is a, a thing, so would you make the presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, I have to apologize for the length of this presentation.
Oh, geezers. The last time you said that, we were here an hour.
It's one slide.
Thank you.
This is slide from the earlier presentation.
This should have been, this should be the easiest thing you've had to talk about this evening, so we're asking to, um, get approval to purchase a lot in the northwest neighborhood, that once we take the right-of-way dedication, it's currently owned by the CRA, once we take the right-of-way dedication on this lot, it will no longer be of a buildable lot size, we're asking to purchase it so that we have the appropriate right-of-way in this area for a whopping sum of ten dollars, Christine's not here any longer, um, and then what land is left over, we'll work with parks to make into a lovely pocket park for the neighborhood.
Can we afford that?
Sure.
Oh, okay, tender hold.
Hey, I'll chip, I will donate the money to the city if, if need be.
It's coming out of your health insurance.
I got five dollars on it.
Terrance and I are chipping in together, we're gonna, we're gonna take the money from my lemonade stand. We're gonna buy this lot.
Yeah, we'll just say, lemonade, lemonade sales can certainly cover this one dollar, I, I think.
I have eight dollars on me, Missy, so how do we divide us up?
Well, I'll take your eight.
Yeah, you're not getting the land, but she'll take your eight.
Right.
Are we ready for a motion?
Oh, we need a motion.
Just a second, sorry.
Oh, excuse me, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to address this matter, please come to the lectern, give your name and address for the record, and you will each have three minutes. Seeing none, public comment is closed. To the commission.
Uh, I'm on board.
Well.
Yeah, uh, I will happily motion for approval when everyone's ready.
Do it, I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Do anyone have a second?
Second.
Second.
He didn't make the motion.
He would be happy to make a motion, are you making?
I move the approval of item eight A.
There we go.
Second.
Which is, uh, resolution number one, one six dash two five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is done, no first readings, comments by the city manager.
I yield at this time, thank you.
Good answer. Comments by the city, are you still on, Lynn?
She is.
Oh, she's, she's muted, so she's, you know.
She needs another vacation.
Oh, you're on, okay, I'm just checking, because, you know, when I hear voices, I like to know, be able to, be able to rationalize them.
It's one thirty in the morning here, but I'm on.
Got you, got you.
Thank you.
I have no comment.
Feels like 1:30 in the morning here, so that, that's okay, so you have no comment, so then to the commission, I'll start with you, Commissioner Long.
Yeah, I have a real quick thing, it, I think kind of aligns with some of the stuff we've, we've been talking about, or that you brought up during the last military conversation, Mayor, so I'd just like to raise an idea for consideration, that aligns with our goals around economic development and long-term fiscal sustainability, in light of recent efforts like, by cities like Boca Raton and Boynton Beach to proactively market themselves to targeted audience, audiences, particularly in higher opportunity regions like New York, I propose that we explore engaging an outside agency to support Delray Beach's strategic marketing and messaging, and just, just to be clear, this is not a critique of our internal staff, Gina does an amazing job, or our business development folks, this would just be a complimentary resource, helping us to stay more agile, seize effort, seize emerging opportunities, and bring more business professionals and employers into Delray, that in turn would help us diversify our tax base and reduce the burden on residents long-term, and again, I, I, what I would like to ask is that we just direct the city manager to, to meet with a qualified agency, and if appropriate, retain their services within or below the existing spending authorities, this would be a de minimis amount, I think this type of investment could generate outsized returns in visibility, economic activity, and long-term resilience, so as I mentioned, both of our neighbors are doing this, I think we're seeing a lot of cities sort of do this, to try and capitalize on it, I don't want necessarily replicate Boca's exact model, because it's very political, but, the basis of what they're doing does make a lot of sense, I think, and I think that it's a very specialized type of messaging, that we could benefit by at least having some conversations.
Okay, Commissioner Burns?
I, I think that we need to stimulate and do more with our economic development, and I, I think that's a great idea.
Could we ask him to just get information and come back to us with like, a little presentation cost, what they might do, et cetera, before we allow him to just move forward with it, just, we're on the same page, but I, I think it's a great idea, I just want to know more.
Works for me.
Thanks, good idea.
So, if there's consensus at that effect, I'll be happy to proceed as noted, and to advise the City Commission via public meeting, as to what that entails, what that might look like, so that everybody can be comfortable as just requested.
Just for the record, one of the items on the list that I handed you, it's, it's on that item for the list.
Oh, really?
It is, just to let you know.
You've been talking about it for a while.
Well, because the idea that, I mean, are you finished your comments?
I didn't have comments yet.
Okay.
It was Mr. Long who sent the comments.
That's all I got, yeah, you go.
Oh, do you want me to go?
Are you finished your comments?
I'll go to my comments.
Okay.
Did you have comments?
I didn't.
Oh, okay, I'll go and then, okay, thank you, I want to thank our Assistant City Attorney for joining us this evening, and obviously, our City Attorney for joining us this evening, who should be on vacation and not joining us, we really appreciate you, Mr. Haja Mary, I don't think he's here, but, I want to thank Mr. Haja Mary, because that gentleman got up in front of us last week, and was talking about the color of his water, showed a picture, Mr. Haja Mary got right out to his house, checked the water, sent us all an email with photos, I always appreciate, um, Mr. Haja Mary in his, how he serves our, our residents and customers, and also us, all the time, thank you, the DDA had one of the best yoga events probably in the whole state, Full Moon Yoga, amazing event, thank you to the DDA, and I want to welcome the, um, new grads from our Police Academy, welcome, and we look forward to having you, that's it, thank you.
Uh, I just have a couple of quick, quick items, um, first of all, I, I was, I, I was able to go to, to the fire department over the, over the weekend, where they, they had their, their graduating class, and it was, I was delighted to, to, to be there and watch these young, uh, new firefighters, they're now technically badge, they're, they're new firefighters, um, start their careers, and I watched the promotion, so it was very, it was a very interesting, very interesting, uh, to listen to them all, and to meet them all, and it was, it was a lot of fun, um, I, I want to comment on, the comments that were made regarding my views on this parking, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time, because we, we'll have the opportunity to, to do that, but, if, the concept that, we all understand the importance of downtown, but I'm, I'm looking at the notes here, and they're saying, well, they spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, so they spend $100,000, they can't afford $3 a park, I don't buy it, it hasn't affected the parking in downtown West Palm, hasn't affected the parking, the, the shopping in downtown Boca, and we're talking about a small amount of money, and I was particularly bothered, not bothered, but, I was, I was profound, where you would say, well, some people like to stay all day, that's exactly what we're trying to avoid, that is exactly what we're trying to avoid, and while the, I understand the downtown merchants, which is expected, because this happened when I was on the CRA board, way back when, when we were building, building Old School Square Garage, the merchants all then say, oh no, we don't want metered parking, but as soon as you put the garage in, we'll do metered parking, it took us five years to get metered parking, because for the same argument, you're going to kill our business, same arguments, I could play back the tape, so, my, my view is that the people parking, it's a user fee, people that are parking to go there are using the, the city's facilities to, to go shop, it's not my job to subsidize the, the retailers who do great work, and the restaurants who do great work, and this is a downtown item, I mean, I mean, I'm going to say to, to the executive director of the DDA, if the DDA wants to pick up the cost, that's absolutely great, um, because we've offered a voucher program, we've offered a number of other things to, to, to ease the, um, the issue with, as, so that the retailers and the restaurants can have their, their employees park, but, it's an asset, and I can't ask somebody who's living in another part of the city, not using downtown, to say, well, we're going to give this for, for free, and, we, we, I know we're not, we don't want to be like everybody else, but when you look down that list, the only place that had free parking was the city of Delray Beach, and these other cities like Boca is not, are not dying, I mean, they, they're, they have active parking programs, can we tweak it, maybe, do we want to look at what Commissioner Markers talked about, using the parking garages for, for the employees, maybe, I think some of that's a good idea, I'm not saying no to those ideas, but, you know, the surface lots are, are, are something that I think that need to be metered, and as Commissioner Frankel said, this has been, this is not a new plan, I mean, this, this has been in the works for some years now, so, I'm happy to tweak it, to, to, to look at what the parking garage, to get people in it, that, that made, made some sense to me, so, we have an opportunity to tweak it, which we all know, and so that, that's my view, I just think that, you know, the city needs money, and we just can't give away assets to support one part of the city, and have the rest of the city, we're asking them to increase their taxes, we're asking them to pay taxes, and somehow, they, they, we, we got to give them a break too, so, any, but, that's all, that's all I have to say.
I just wanted to ask a, a question, so, I know that you are a, a supporter of community input, resident input.
Yep.
Do you feel that the community had adequate input on this?
You know, that's a, I don't know, we've, this has been discussed, as, as, as Mr. Long said, this has been discussed for five years.
I know we discussed it, since I've been on the commission.
So, I don't know, oh no, at what point is, is input, it, 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 what, because